Yeah, please.
According to my experience...
I'm working on getting the screen so I can try and put it back there.
Alright.
Oh, on that bigger thing, yeah. That's fine. I just know we're trying to be a little stricter with the thing.
I'm from, like I said, it's more like... David Rehm, he went from his... Everyone, when you have that...
Right, if you have something there.
Yeah, yes.
And I have one, I'm writing on it, it's not even right. And I have the other one, it's not even right.
Yes.
Unfortunately, that's...
Yeah, I understand. I have it, I have it ordered to now.
Okay. I don't want you to see it there now.
Right.
Actually, I first...
And are you sure the press correctly stated? Yeah, they're not ready yet, or is it...
Yeah. They said they got that all noted.
Okay. Okay. Jeff, Jeff, those articles are plain to read today.
I am the senator.
They're actually addressed to Yankee, it says "for signing seal."
Uh, Yankees, Yankees, not signing seal.
Sure. I only had that. And then, and then it... Yeah, I'm not sure if it's tomorrow or Thursday. I think John was saying, uh, we're like, Jeff, it's been a while. That was yesterday.
John, how you doing? Okay, how you doing? Good.
Oh, Monday, yesterday was the week. Today is service, and tomorrow is the term. Uh, so from the morning to the Thursday. Oh, okay. So maybe it's...
It's crazy. He said, you're saying, it's a, it's a close choice, not a choice.
Good evening, how are you this evening? Good, 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 sign someone out.
Oh, God, I thought you were...
Yeah? Did you... Trying to get towards goal.
Oh, I can hear you. Yeah, I can. Yeah, you don't sign that, you don't, that's hard. Thank you.
Used to get the old type, you know?
Oh, yeah?
Who used to do it?
Maybe Chris Johnson used to pass that...
They usually try to do it, you know? Yeah, yeah.
They just send me like that. Oh, I see.
Time is set, that's right, yeah. Must have happened.
Uh, there's one, most likely, I think.
You get that for a while. Yeah, 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 not too many more than like that.
It's...
How you doing?
Good.
So, again, we are full of, had to have it right now, in every point, in every... Then, they made the, what, they let it stop, you know, like, it's starting to be a factor. So, fast, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, the... But, yes, this might be one of the things, you know, you want to... We're gonna notice any, probably, yeah, the right, the right of the law. Somebody hasn't gotten before.
It's got some lit, I think, it's got, it's got like that.
When you think you're...
I think, yeah.
If we can predict same... Wonderful.
Do it before the week, you know?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not speaking over that.
You can't, no, we're, we're working hard today. You know, we're trying to run it forward. You guys got, but I'm actually perfect. So, let's, let's, so, I understand, I understand, 100%. Better work together. Where's Mr. Jackson?
For the meeting to order, let's rise and look the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission, one and half, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Alec, could you please read the certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township for Lake Wood at these 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting, and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Hey, roll call.
Mr. Grunberger, Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Shabel.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbottom.
Here.
Mr. Kurtzle.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Mr. Isaacson.
Mr. Graffos.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Garper. Hey, Alec, I'm looking around, I don't see a stenographer today, so I would ask everybody to please speak loudly into the mic if you have a record.
I actually have been unsuccessful with the assistance of the zoning board secretary, unsuccessful in finding a stenographer willing to do our meetings.
Is that hard?
Where, where a difficult board, there's a lot that happens in a short timeframe, there's a lot of people who are not respectful of the, don't talk over each other, we'll... We did have someone here in our last meeting who was, um, giving a test run essentially, and after the meeting she said she actually would not do our board.
Oh, boy.
Um, I had not another company willing to do it. I did speak with Mr. Jackson. The recording system in the courtroom is a court-certified system, so a stenographer is not required, provided that recording, recording system is running through the laptop. And we do have the backup of the webcam, which also has an audio recording as well. Um, if any applicant or objector ever wanted to get a transcript of the meeting in written form, they could take that video to whomever they would like to have one of those prepared, so...
Just ask everybody to please speak loudly into the mic if you have a record.
Also, these microphones are all new, I see, so these, these are much better than the old ones.
Okay, hopefully, hopefully it works. Okay, the, John, who's in the square in the professionals on today?
I will. Please read right then, these were a firm testimony, these were spoken to, called to, and... Right, the reply, Mr. Vogt, Board Engineer, Planner, has taken the others.
Okay, the number four, memorization resolutions.
Yes.
We have one, and just say, or two.
Two, first, Mr. President, we have an appointment, I have sent this draft out by email. Um, the only thing I've had left, uh, John's office and I have left blank, was the length of the term for conflict attorney for Mr. Goldman. Um, I know Mr. Dasky had been appointed for one year for conflict attorney, I had assumed that Mr. Goldman was as well, but I didn't want to make assumptions. Uh, Mr. Jackson's firm was listed for six months, and, um, RB was listed for an 80-day term. So, we're watching for Mr. Goldman's appointment as well.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I...
Like a motion for...
I, I was under the impression it would be for 12 months, but...
Okay. I leave the problems.
Okay, thank you. I guess, uh, motions and...
Okay, yes, I...
Yeah, all in favor, yeah, alright?
I know.
Okay, number two.
And the second, uh, Ms. Weinstein is here to discuss with you on that, um... Jack Ronheim, is that you here, sorry?
Zermit Haier.
Yes, Jack Ronheim.
I said, please come.
There's a draft resolution that was sent by email, um, you also have the top of your plan, it's stacked there, it says architectural plans for this application, which was previously approved, I believe in December. Ms. Weinstein wanted something changed in the resolution based off of these architecturals before the board...
You just say who's the majority vote on this application? Did you know? Both by...
Actually, unfortunately, I may not have that, I wish I had this day. They, they don't have it with me because I just, we not going to vote for it in December, I apologize for that.
Well, we know the new members can't vote.
Correct, and I can't.
Do that wrong.
Yes, and Mr. Graffos had been here, so I would assume it's Mr. Franklin, Mr. Flansbottom, and...
How, how far back was it?
It was, I believe it was the first meeting in September?
It, I believe it was the first meeting in September, so it would have been around the 13th.
No, it was the 13th.
It's special for you, because maybe you weren't going to be here. It was around the 13th.
It was Monday night.
Terry, do you have that, anything on the...
Do you want me to, Mr. Terry, do you want me to just...
Yeah, I'll ask Terry if he has anything to say first.
I apologize, Mr. Flansbottom, per my notes, I only have Franklin and Kurtzle as here for that meeting, I did transfer my notes and forgot I had done that.
Okay, so this is one thing.
You just need a brief explanation, what happened here is that the applicant decided to switch what was supposed to be the attic, to, to, basement to the attic. Basically, there's no other substance to change to the plans for these schools, other than to switch, and I apologize, I'm not supposed to make, so I forgot it, because we, the school was supposed to be in basement, that's what you're going to add, or vice versa, right, that's what I'm saying, so... But, that's what we switched, and we just, rather than have to deal with this during residential compliance, when it comes to, when they say, hey, you guys need a plan. We just figured that the line is a caution, since the resolution wasn't passed anyway, um, let's give you the new plans, make sure it's okay with them, so, just asking to pass the resolution.
Same, same square footage, no changes in the use? And no changes in use?
No, no changes in use, no changes in the corporate.
There are changes need to be made in the resolution, because the residents thus specified that the second floor attic was the floor building, and, and you now wish to switch that. So, that might surprise you, Mike.
So, you imagine it's going to be in storage, inside the attic, and so...
And the basement was supposed to be classrooms originally?
Right. A part of the school, I don't know if...
No, it's the third floor, library, multipurpose room. You bring that... Terry, are you okay with it? Is any difference?
There's no material changes to either design, Jen. That's my understanding.
Right. I don't go up to the third floor with students, is any difference? Fire code, anything?
The use of the building itself is going to be building, but there's, you have substantial changes, correct?
Correct. I was, uh, being here on the...
Okay, so you're, yeah, it's it?
Yes.
Okay. So, with, uh, so only Mr. Franklin can vote?
Okay.
So, how will you move it then? Mr. Franklin, you okay with it?
Yeah, where, where is the, where's the boiler, the, the, all that stuff for heating and...
I, I see the intent is that the, most of the cap would be made for...
They don't show it.
It's a, it's a substantial make-up, there's certainly room in there to provide the cap, or the, or the, or the...
It wouldn't have been nicer if you'd put it on there, would it?
We could have put it on.
Yeah, it'd been nice, yeah. Why don't you at the next meeting bring a drawing with it on there, and then we'll vote on it?
Well, just, I'm just asking to remove that, I want the resolution...
I know, I'm just asking you before we move that, if you draw where the boiler and that stuff is going to go, and then we could vote on it.
It wasn't there, it was kind of down here.
Okay, maybe it'll be there this time, won't it? Hey, you gotta vote from these plans, why not have a, a complete plan, so that the, the planning board sees exactly what the heck we're voting on? I'm getting tired of this, open stuff, where you can do whatever you want, they have to, I really am.
Can you wait for the 20th?
You wanna, you wanna do this on correspondence, would it be difficult to just come back with revised plans with the next meeting, so Mr. Franklin's satisfied, and the board is satisfied? I mean, you're, you're, the alternative is to say, no, we can't do it on correspondence.
Well, this is the resolution, I would just propose carrying the resolution for the next meeting, if Mr. Franklin wants to finalize plans. If we have no motion to approve the resolution, then...
He's the one who can make a motion right now. Okay, so you make a motion at the table at the next meeting?
I make a motion at the table at the next meeting, or whenever they get the drawings to us.
Everybody in favor of the table? Look, the vote on it.
So, and if you would ask that on the next meeting, we'll make your vote then, huh?
Okay, I, I, I just want to go on the record, and we spoke about this today, I'm asking all engineers, all attorneys, everybody, have the plans as much as possible complete with all information that is necessary for us to vote on?
I should, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you're aware, per my records, the only eligible member we vote on is Art Frank and Kurtzle and Mr. Grunberger, as the other members who have approved, didn't know what happened here, so, it would have to be those three.
Okay. Um, okay. Good correspondence. First of all, Alec, is there any changes to the public hearing?
Yes.
That's it, before the correspondence, if anybody's here for that, we could send them on.
Um, on the agendas, they're available to the public, and also in the stacks there, um, the last three applications are listed as not being heard tonight. Um, number seven and number nine, I would recommend that they announce that carries for the next meeting, which is February 20th. One of those is actually carrying because the Asbury Park Press themselves overlooked the notice they were supposed to publish, but the news is more nailed to the neighbors about tonight, so I would recommend we make that legal announcement. Um, number eight is requesting to carry for, uh, multiple times, and I would recommend that that one be required, just providing notice to the neighbors.
Okay. So, would you like to, Mr. Jackson, could you announce them?
Yes, I will.
It's seven and nine, it's the 20th, and eight needs a new, new notice.
Number seven and nine, it's tonight's calendar.
It's on the back.
They gave our, alright, SP 7274, you see the words?
It's something.
Uh, as well as number eight, ASB 2129, Marion Klein, as well as number nine, ASB 2265, Talbot, where are by, or on?
No, Mr. Jackson, number eight is going to have to re-notice.
Okay, number seven and number nine are going to be adjourned, and will be heard on Wednesday.
February 20th.
February 20th, 2018, 6 o'clock, this meeting hall, there will be a notice. And number eight, Marion Klein, uh, will be adjourned, and there will be new notices on that matter, so we don't have to announce, yeah?
Okay, thank you. First one through the correspondence, now.
Under correspondence, we have a letter from Mr. Flyer regarding SP 2181, River, 1161 LLC. Um, you do have the letter in your, uh, plan stack, I believe, there. Um, I'll let Mr. Flyer decide, as the statute condition led to the resolution, if you fire this mission, it's ending, okay?
I'm here to do what's due tonight, back to 60, uh, Mr. Franklin, my neighbor, the D O P, and they said they were, they were... Everybody along Route 9, and the township have got the letter, they're actually going to do those approvals. So, one of the conditions that was in it, uh, application, that we are an application to the D O P to sidewalk, the letter that we got, and then, we haven't done it yet, because we could get direction from them on where to put the sidewalk, and we don't want to put sidewalk in and then have to rip it out. They sent us a plan indicating we can do it, so we will bond for the sidewalk. If they take longer than, it's been so far to actually put the sidewalk in, then we have to get them to do it, but we don't want to submit, uh, for that permit at this time, because we got a map from them, showing exactly where the sidewalk is going to be, we're going to do improvements tomorrow on our property, and all my clients up to down, uh, who tonight have gotten a small letter. The whole rest for this evening is to modify condition number 14, and not say we need to apply for the D O P.
Is there a sidewalk in there?
There's no sidewalk in there. We're going to bond for side, so this applicant is committing that he will put sidewalk in, he will need to put it on his property, or the D O P right away, but it looks like next year they're going to do these improvements, uh, and...
Next year.
Yes.
So, you, you body...
Because the board feel more comfortable, we'll put the sidewalk on our property now, so we don't need the D O P for that. What that's going to mean is it'll be full sidewalk, it's also going to mean, next year with the D O P, they have to spend money to care of the sidewalk.
It's very hard to trust them, you know? I don't have a very good record there, you know?
Yeah, is John...
If you're familiar with this site, it operated for a long time, if it wasn't, you know, the additions on the back, just rip it out, it was not changing, uh, we aren't ready to put the sidewalk in, we will bond for it, if someone make application...
Right, if, if it isn't done in one year, then you'll put the sidewalk in?
Yes.
Or make that part of the motion.
Okay. Okay, and then it has to be bonded?
Yeah, bonded, but, uh, we'll make it part of, if it's not done in one year, that's open to sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, okay. Okay. Okay, so, so John, you heard Mr. Franklin's making a motion, that we have to bond for it right away, and if within the year the D O T does not put the sidewalks in, then the applicant has to put it in?
That makes sense to me, I mean, you have to bond in place, it's a requirement, so that, that, that's, to me, not like, that's just an administrative way of making sure that the sidewalk's going to, the board's comfortable with that.
John's saying that with the D O T sometimes it can be open-ended and take a few years.
Well, and, and...
So, we're limited to a year.
There's also, it's very difficult for the township to pursue a bond, everyone thinks a bond happens by magic, oh, there's a bond, it's not easy to get a bonding tone, to pay out a bond.
Please be quiet, audience.
I mean, it's a lot of work by the municipality, et cetera, but, the money is there, it is bonded, and it eventually will catch up with the applicant, so it is...
I'm sorry, do we have a cost estimate on the bond?
Not yet, I believe I was requested to prepare, I haven't done it yet.
John, you got a question, John, didn't Governor Christie sign a...
Yes.
A bill that there be no more bonding of, of this type of thing?
I, Alec said yes, I don't know if Terry's familiar with that, I am not familiar with that legislation, so it's legislation that would prohibit bonding for...
That's right, of, of, of the private work, which means on all the streets and everything.
There are changes that have been adopted to what is bonded, it is more... It has more of an impact, as I understand it, on private, for something like this is a public improvement, in my opinion, will not be effective.
And, and curbs and sidewalks in the public right of way would certainly be a public improvement, that's not like an internal walkway.
Yeah, there was something on the site.
I, yeah, information another way, that's why I was wondering.
I'm going to take a quick look now, see if I can find it.
The way that we've been interpreting that in the engineer's office, um, a site like this, for example, whether in addition or, or construction of a new site, in the past, the applicant has bonded for all of the improvements.
That's right.
Whether on the property, in the right of way, like the curbs, sidewalk, parking spaces, all of it's been bonded for. The new legislation provides that the bonding can be separated, so that improvements off the private property, which fall into the public right of way, such as curb, roadway, stand, expansion, sidewalk, those are, are still required to be bonded, as they always have been. However, the improvements on the private property, such as the private parking lot, um, the private, um, handicap parking space signs, um, those are not required to be bonded, and are only factored into the inspection fees.
Okay.
And I believe at some point in the future, they may still be required to post a maintenance bond for the entire site, I'm not exactly clear on that yet, we haven't gotten there yet, um, but they're no longer required to bond for the improvements on the private property.
Right, and what, the bonds that are in place now are canceled, is that right?
That I don't know, I'm going to ask you, can't, so I...
That I haven't heard.
Yeah, I've heard that, too. It, it, that's a big move, you know, as far as the planning board is concerned, so, if you can get a report back, what is going to be bonded and what isn't, when we start giving C O's out for these things, that there's something that's not done, and there's no bond in place, who then will have to pick up the money to pay for the improvements?
You have an excellent point, John, uh, one of the items in the legislation, as I understand it, uh, and it definitely comes into place here, because people ask for, for T C O recommendations all the time, in case of a C O. My understanding of the new law is, if people come in on a new project today, they're not bonded, in, in terms of on-site, if they want a T C O or a T C O recommendation, there's a regulation requirement now that they actually need to have financial guarantee for those uncompleted, non-bonded on-site.
Alright.
But, that's an excellent question.
Yeah, if you could get a report on that.
We'll look into that, and I'll give you a report.
So, John, do you feel comfortable that we can bond it right now?
Yes.
Have a guarantee?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second John's motion.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're, we're actually working, John, on the township level, we're working with the manager's office to change how, how we process the T C O.
Oh, okay.
And I was going to take this into account as well.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Shabel.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbottom.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, Alec, from number one through six, there's no other changes?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're on to number one.
SP 2101 is a minor subdivision for two lots from one, made by Mayor Wayne Grant, located on Cory Court. I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, do you have something you wanted to tell the board on, that came up during our planning meeting, or...
Yes, um, Mr. Lyons and Mr. Schmuckler, um, had an issue today with that subdivision, uh, it has a private roadway, Mr. Lyons has put the map up, and it's, there's a question we need to act, as we're professionals, with whether architectural committee, uh, commissions will be required. This is, uh, I don't know if it's four lots, no, 205 lots, one, two, three, four, five, around private road, both of that, their idea is, they said, well, we're going to do this sub-admission, and then we'll sell the lots, and people will build whatever they want. And as we know, one of the commission requirements is architectural floor plans. Uh, the applicant said, well, we don't know what the people are going to build, I said, it is on the checklist, and I know there's been discussion of that, that's what we want, input from the board, as to whether, for this type of case, we require architectural submissions, or if not.
My opinion, architectural submission for something like this, you're just a fool's error, you're just going to submit anything, so as long as you have a buil, a building envelope, and you're going to conform within the site, the setbacks, people are going to, as long as people conform within those setbacks, which they have to, that's, that's fine.
You can't argue, you can't...
Yeah, I mean, they could, at this point, you could set, you could put forth any architectural drawings you want, it wouldn't make a difference.
So, I just wanted to work in the direction, call the board on that, well, and the board adjustment, if they have isolated 205 lots, and the house has to have unique characteristics to compensate for a lot of, I think that's what...
There's also bulk marriage.
There's bulk marriage at the board, but, so is everyone... So is everyone?
Are you okay with that?
In, in general, I'm okay with that. My, my only concern would be if one of the lots that's created as a subdivision needs a certain unique type of house. I, I, I think that.
It's on the size lot or something, then.
I, I, that, nothing would prevent the board from this company, for the board, if they get into it, to say, you gotta come back to our contractual.
So I guess my, my point would be if it's conforming application, or more or less conforming, and I don't know what that means.
Lots are on these sites.
Wrong.
They're all on these sites, it's an arsehole zone, they're like about ten and a half thousand.
Are, are you asking any variance in any setbacks on the, on the building envelope?
No, just one, you.
Not on the building envelope, the, any setbacks?
No, no, no.
Okay.
So then, then I would be okay, if there's no setback or variances, I would be okay on that architectural part.
Okay.
Did everyone else satisfy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so roll call.
The board gathered, thank you.
I, I, I would, hold on, I'd like to stop with Terry. Would you like to go over there?
I just received a word on this application, SC twenty-one, that the applicant has actually used neighbors in the hallway as we speak, they'd like to table the application from March sixth public hearing.
Okay. Do you want to make, roll call, favorite, uh, March sixth? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Jackson, would you like to make an announcement?
Members publicly advised, number one on tonight's calendar, SC twenty-one oh one, Meyer with Wayne Brand, has been adjourned and will be heard on March sixth, two thousand eighteen, six o'clock, this meeting hall, there will no further notice.
March sixth is a regular meeting or tech meeting, are they going back to Ellie?
It is a public hearing, we've actually carried more to applications today already.
Okay. Yes, we have a few from tonight, we're going there. Okay, number two.
SC twenty-two eighty, by Esther Galia Mahan, this is a minor subdivision, create five lots from four, paint Omni Court and Silver.
Okay, would you like to go over there? Three, four? Yes, Terry, question.
Um, just looking, beginning on page three, Chairman, under adjournings, um, our comment number two, we have, we have raised the issue of the, the potential for sidewalk saggy variances. Uh, particularly our, our revised comments, the revised development show, I'm gonna go by deck panel, siding building, so.
I'm on, uh, major report.
On ground. So therefore, they're not part of the structure.
They're not part of the structure.
Are you seeking or do you require sidewalk? I mean, there's no sidewalk variances, compared to the standard of test.
Correct.
Thank you. And then, um, beginning on, excuse me, number three, uh, here's the accessory shed for the owner on the, to do, uh, and therefore that would be a creative variance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, then continuing on, um, we want clarification regarding.
Please be quiet, I'm not here.
You swear affirm, does that's what I'm gonna give before this board with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, Joseph Schuwe, K D A Engineering Services, Anson, true.
Pleased, a professional engineer and planner?
That's right.
The board has recognized him on many occasions, you recognize him?
Yes.
All right, Joe, just, just continuing on comment four, are you seeking part of relief?
Uh, we are seeking part of relief, and I'll clarify as to where that is, uh, we are seeking three parking stalls for four required specifically at existing houses. Existing house, existing driveway on the existing cul-de-sac, uh, we're looking at how to expand the driveway. It is all existing, operating well now, and again, it's not cul-de-sac, it does not have additional, uh, or, or, or. This application, uh, is for existing properties, probably about two thousand square feet. What we're actually doing here is creating two duplexes, uh, properties on Silver and the remaining remainder of the lot, uh, two lot, three point two-two, is a single family home, uh, front and Omni Court. Uh, there's a zone line separating the property, uh, the duplexes will be in the R ten A zone, it will comply.
The only one that's existing is the one on Omni Court, that's existing?
Yeah.
That house is existing?
Yes, the only house is existing.
All the one is proposed to be lived.
All the other ones are proposed.
Okay, continue.
Uh, so the, the variances were requested, uh, our side yards set by standards for the proposal duplex, uh, which I'll show you, uh, on the map, uh, of the area, the several occupations in the area have been approved for similar side setback. Uh, we're requesting a setback for the existing shed, which is an existing condition, is the existing shed for existing house. Again, the only, uh, this particular house, the only input they have on this application is that they're just gaining a little bit of land. I'm not proposing any improvements on that lot. Uh, so it's an existing non-conformity, uh, in addition to parking stalls. They have an existing driveway, uh, unfortunately due to the depth, it's only thirty-one feet deep, so it doesn't count, and a four car driveway, uh, but it's operating as a four car driveway, has for a number of years, built for a number of years, without proposing any changes. So it's just a variant due to existing conditions, not creating a parking issue, so we're operating that.
Is it, is there a newer construction house or older construction? You know, one else construction?
Uh, the particular house, it's been a while since I've seen it, I don't think it's brand new.
My concern is what happens if there's gonna be a new house built there?
It's about sixteen years old.
And then they have, if there's any new house built in that lot, then they have to conform, the shed has to go away, they have to conform with the parking and everything.
Oh, sir, we, we came in with a new home, we have to conform or we have to come back?
If you went to the zoning board for a new home there, you would have to conform with the four parking spots?
Uh, correct, or we're quite varying.
You would need to apply approval, which parking would you review?
And you wouldn't say that it's an existing non-conformity?
If it's a new home, they would have.
Yeah, the existing non-conformity go away, but it's a new one.
Okay.
Because we would have, obviously knock down that, and, and would leave that driveway.
On the proposed houses, duplexes, do you not ask for any variance on parking?
No.
Okay.
Just one question, Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Joe, we incorporated lengthy recommendations, uh, from the shade tree commission, do we have an issue with the recommendations? Page six.
Page six, if you'd like.
Uh, sorry.
It's not really, you have the affection to go, uh, to the landscape recommendation. Uh, primarily, most of them would simply do apartments, they are requesting, uh, a buffer in seven oh one and seven oh four, um. Essentially, a buffer between the duplex lots and the single family. I don't think we have an issue with providing, for example.
So, i- if I could just address one thing over here, combined, you need, the, the zone requires twenty-five feet combined setback, side yard setback?
Uh, specifically, a duplex lot, that doesn't apply. Uh, so the combined applies on a single family, but our duplexes are permitted a zero setback on one side, uh, because it's, uh, the, the demarcating property.
And specifically, you need to sit, the, the ten foot applies, we are requesting a seven feet half prepared in the city here, uh, demonstrating other projects in the area, other, uh, duplexes, uh, projects, which is gonna approve, particularly, uh, this is Prospect Street, this is Williams,
Omni Court at the top, pink is the property in question, uh, the yellow, green neon yellow, were the project that's approved with seven and a half foot side setback, uh, the yellow here and the orange were two other projects that were approved in the area with seven and a half foot setback. So it's acceptable to have a reduced setback, uh, in the area, uh, that forces the negative right here, and, uh, will not have a detrimental impact on neighborhood, as it exists, uh, in other areas, other, directly, uh, surrounded.
Could you write A one on that for evidence?
Certainly.
How about on that street itself, what's the setbacks of the other houses on, on Silver?
I don't know the exact setbacks of each area, uh, but I couldn't tell you.
I mean, I think that's important to look at when you're going from a twenty-five required to a fourteen combined.
Could you explain to me, this was one big property, what's lot three point two-two?
Essentially, Omni Court was created by a subdivision, uh, and the lot three point two-two is created after we opened that subdivision.
Okay.
Um, that backs up to the three lots that are on Silver, six, seven, eight, and seven. Uh, so the owners of each have, uh, have gotten together, and the intent here is to give three point two-two of this land in the rear, bigger backyard. Uh, the duplexes, uh, on six, seven, eight, and seven, as shown on our plan, uh, are fully conforming in lot size, lot area, uh, width, uh, et cetera, so, uh, there was excess land there, uh, that the owner of this lot, that will be more beneficial to them, they're getting, uh, you know, their big backyard.
Which piece is going to three point two-two? That's the, that whole center turn?
Yep.
And duplexes is not, that comes on the size because of that? You said an area.
No, it's conforming, where it aren't A zone, send out where it is.
So you actually said the opposite, you said the, the three existing lots are giving additional property to three point two-two?
Exactly, so these three existing lots go all the way back here now. The, they're getting subdivided into these four duplex lots, and this, this remainder piece is going to three point two-two.
Okay. This is the car. I understand, I understand, so there's, there's no area, because you're getting variance. Okay. The only variance that you're seeking is a side yard setback?
Is a side yard setback.
That's on the back.
Or, or any existing.
Okay.
When do you think you can have this information about the side yard setback on the rest of the board?
Uh, we would have to, with a survey, these locations, who would probably just complete the, 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 verify the exact setback. Uh, I could take a look at aerials and, and give you, uh, approximate numbers, but we are number that we're gonna survey.
I, i- i- if, if the block is, doesn't have any, um, variances right now on side yard setbacks, I don't think that we should come in and start, um, we should be the ones getting it. It's a pretty, it's a pretty significant side yard setback.
The, John, could you pick up the, uh? Joe, the, those are totally different lots, I mean, totally different blocks, as you showed.
Uh, correct, but it isn't, this one is the block across the street, um, and this one is across the wall.
And on that, on that, on the same street, there's no variances, or?
On the same street, I don't know. I'm not saying there aren't any variances, I'm saying I'm not aware, I don't have the information to give.
The, Jackson, on the, on the rest of the report, you agree everything with the report?
We have no further objection to, to the report, the variances can be granted under what the C one, the C two criteria, the solar reconditioning need for the property, the existing outdoor performance we talked about, and the better plan for it here, again, in this particular case, we did expand the rear yard, uh, and by going with a wider unit, we can do expand the rear yard on the duplex as well.
And without any variances, you have to make one duplex a single, and then it wouldn't, you wouldn't have any variances, right?
Uh, without any variances, the duplexes will get substantially longer, and you have a very limited rear yard.
Okay, why would they get smaller?
Longer.
They, they, uh, it's gonna be.
To a happy.
If they want to keep four houses, oh, because you want to keep four houses, I think it's a two duplexes or one thing of that.
I'd say, he wants to keep four.
Okay. Okay, any board members have any questions for the applicant? And signal, we'll open up to the public, anybody in the public would like to be heard on this application. Signal, we'll close it to the public. I want to ask for a motion on this application.
I'll move to approve the application.
With the variances?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Klein's boss.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
No.
Mr. Graffos.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Okay. The next one, we'll bring down, I'll announce it to you.
SC twenty-two sixty-four.
Congregation, oral call now.
The main site that I'm presenting about on each one's.
Okay, yes.
Well, we got the setup, Mr. Schuwe, if you can, if you can, right now, you prefer a first step, right? We can, we can.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do, Joseph Schuwe, K D A Engineering, Anson, true.
You recognize her?
Yes. As a planner and engineer, uh, could you please mark your two exhibits, A one and A two? The rendering will be A one, and the, uh, plot plan, which is already in the record, we'll just make that A two for records. Do you have any other exhibits?
Uh, I have one additional exhibit.
We'll make that A three. And, uh, one, that's your, looks like your drainage plan with, uh, writing on it?
Uh, correct, so A two is a copy of the, uh, layout, the drainage plan, or you are doing some packing. A three is a exhibit that's also, on the issue to be, uh, issued.
Kelly, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Beginning on submission waivers, under nu- number one, on page three, uh, we have a number listed. The first one, uh, is purpose submission through the Ocean County Planning Board. We agree with the applicant that, that due nature and size of the property, uh, it's our understanding that this is exempt from County Planning Board, uh, so we support that. Uh, B, two, four, and ten are man-made features and topography within two, two hundred feet. We support those waivers on the basis that we have enough design information, uh, on, on, on the existing plans. Uh, C one, proposal disagreements, are there any known proposals to be used? No. No, it's not so like a waiver that aren't on the spot.
Correct.
Correct, thank you. Uh, landscaping, um, design calculations of shade tree, uh, we're supporting those for hearing purposes only, obviously, uh, if you end new landscaping, that is going to be required by the board, or by shade tree commission as practical, um, is gonna be required if, if the board acts favor. Uh, similarly, with the drainage calculations, uh, and finally, the shade tree, you'll have to have as well. All right, so the waivers, then, the board is really acting on, as I understand it, um, this topography conscious and then you're choosing the fourth.
Correct.
And you agree to everything else?
I guess we do.
All right.
Subject to our testimony is.
Do we have a motion to go along with the recommendation from engineer? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, waivers approved.
Then, under variances, uh, beginning on page four, uh, the applicant, we seek a variance relief, including minimum size, your setback, combined your setback, um, we're going to hear testimony as to the accuracy of the parking, uh, and if that's sufficient, that would, that would be relieved as well, uh, and since that is in the nine hundred section, correct, Ellie?
Yes.
That would be variance relief. Uh, and also, um, they, they need relief from the front of the parking lots. I, I believe that's everything, correct?
Uh, we still have.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Chairman.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, under design waivers, um, they have seen, they are seeing a lead on, uh, it requires radiation, I'm sure we'll have testimony on that shortly, uh, and finally, um, with
to go around that building. You have access.
And that's a very good point. You can sort of let the staircase down the backside for, uh, for access.
Okay, Mr. Weinstein.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, on date of our call. This application is for preliminary point of strike back. The demolish the existing dilapidated house on the five roof, and to construct a brand new four inch synagogue, and to keep it in our appliance plan, which I think was, uh, they want. This synagogue is currently in existence in the basement of the rabbi's home, that exists directly behind the soccer congress, that opens locally on this pitch. This property is on this porch. The area has grown so much in recent years, the current quarters are built to capacity, and hence the need to construct a brand new edifice, the house on the ground. The basement will have a mikvah and a kiddish room. There will be no simple wall, but there will only be a room, those kiddish and shadows, but no simples in the deep.
No outsides.
No outside, no outside simples, no simples in the deep, so it's, it's used as a kiddish on shadows. The applicant is seeing a variance for side yard setbacks. The property is located in the downtown B two zone, which actually doesn't require side yard setbacks for emergency. For other uses, such as the shul, there is a side yard setback requirement, a seven feet on one side, and combined side yard setback of fifteen feet. The actual side yard setback to the building is about five feet on the side, and both are testimony, and our testimony will show that they span and might be in the side yard setback, which is a problem here, which is why, Charlie, review others calling, those side yard setbacks much smaller than what I just indicated. Our testimony will show that had the applicant stopped with the required side yard setbacks, he would have had to make up for the lack of the width in the deck, and we would have lost parking spaces. We surely don't want to lose parking spaces, in addition to the fact that the shul is nicer with a wider length. The houses on either side of the shul are completely constructed homes, so there is no property that the shul could acquire to make the lot larger. Your honor, those homes are present this evening, I believe, and can voice their opinions for the board. In fact, the water travel see behind me, this is going to be a terrible disapplication. This area, for those who are not familiar with it, is rather congested, and it's really not a great place to put a laundry in the area. Also, the community is truly live, almost all of them live by a stone's throw away, and have no need to drive. I went out there to look at the property myself, and stood in front of it, I couldn't believe how many living rooms you can actually see that are literally, you know, literally a few steps away from the property. Um, so in this case, and certainly have, um, we have people who testified that they really will be and do currently walk to the shul. As I said, the shul exists right now, and there are actually plenty of spaces for now, including the house. Um, so two hundred feet for the house, or there are about two parking spaces over there. Um, at this point, I would, oh, I would like to actually mention your work is more, so I mean, actually, uh, goal lines with the shul is, the shul, we need to start with the variance for a side yard setback, if you just found the positive negative criteria, and explain to the board the variances and why we're requesting that.
Certainly. So the variances being requested for side yard setbacks are point one, seven feet, uh, on the left side, and looking at the plan, west side, by three and a half feet on the right side. You know exactly, point one, seven feet is better to the landing. We currently have a, uh, a ramp and landing on that west side. Uh, ramps are not considered part of a side yard setback, or not considered part of a structure. However, by virtue of having a landing there, that is it. Uh, but to be clear, the building itself, and the new, uh, large cover there, uh, or , uh, projection of the structure is actually in the setback, just the landing, but the handicap accessibility. Uh, that's at point one, seven. The building itself is at five point one, six, uh, just over five feet on the property. Uh, same on the east side, uh, the majority of the building is at five point one, six feet, save for the small ten foot, ten foot, four inch, uh, bump out in the back of the sanctuary, uh, the Aaron's place, on Big Pole, and, uh, that's actually a half feet off the property.
Very good.
With the remainder, uh, it needs a little more than five. Uh, so by virtue of that, the setbacks here are really, uh, as far as it's impacting on the case of property, is five foot, five point one, six, where seven point five is, uh, required. Uh, and again, in this particular case, we have a, a couple of things that are unique to the property. First, these two properties are not your typical side setback property, your typical side property. The E property is front, a neighbor, uh, and we are actually a side against the rear. So there's more separation between the buildings than you typically see where the houses were side to side. Uh, on the opposite side, again, it's just the landing, uh, in that area, and as, uh, we certainly had specifically indicated, in the B two zone, uh, zero setbacks are permitted in this area, which is not unique to the area to have a setback that's less than five, less than, less than seven, less than five, or zero. Uh, so based on that, uh, we feel, under the C two criteria, uh, we can provide a better planning alternative, uh, by widening the building, uh, which in, therefore shortens the building, allows us to provide more parking. Uh, if we were to comply with the side setbacks, uh, we would have to make up for approximately, uh, seven hundredths of a feet, give or take, uh, which would push the building about twenty, twenty to twenty-two feet forward, therefore eliminate at least two and three in the parking stall, in the front. Obviously, parking is at a premium, we're trying to maximize the amount of parking available on the block, uh, so by doing so, we're able to provide five parking stalls, uh, on the west side of the property, uh, with an aisle, uh, down the center.
I think we should talk about parking right now.
Certainly. Uh, so, uh, there's been, uh, some discussion brought to our attention, uh, there were some numbers on the architectural plan, uh, which I believe were, um, incorrect, as far as we haven't calculated the sanctuary space, I almost calculated that...
Just for the record, this is strictly a synagogue, right?
Strictly a synagogue.
Both floors, everything is same.
There is no apartment, uh, there is no, uh...
The plans seem to note that there is an apartment upstairs as a mistake, um, there is no apartment, this is strictly a synagogue, but I said there'll be a bit from the basements, and there'll be that kiddish room, that's all that's in this building.
I want you to put on the record that, so there's no apartment in this and this?
That is correct. There is no apartment here. I think I was just saying, the whole shul is in the rabbi's house, in his basement of the rabbi's house. This, this is a special, as you can see, there ain't any, there's no apartments.
So, the plans that the board have that are part of our files, the architect is showing the main sanctuary of seventeen hundred feet by square feet.
Correct. But that, that area includes both the, uh, Maricopa, the Bima, and both the bookcases are not accounted for in the usable sanctuary area. What happened on the plans are...
Excuse me, are you saying the architect miscalculated the main sanctuary area?
Very, very rare. Yes. So they indicated on their plan that not one hundred ninety-four square feet in that area?
Not one hundred ninety-four, I will tell you where it came from, excuse me, the architect, one hundred ninety-four square feet, the architect took out all the usual tables, tables, and chairs. That's how the architect took out the yard, the yard, the woodshed, took out the, uh, bookshelves, and the farm front, they also took out all the tables and chairs. When I spoke to them, I told them, we shouldn't be taking out the area with tables and chairs, that really should be part of the usable space, at which point the calculations will be done. Um, this official, I can give you the, uh, please, when you valid relations, the usable square footage, it only deducts the, from the, the total square footage, the Bima, the yard, the woodshed, and the, and the bookshelf, the farm front, what was...
Why are you even talking about? I don't understand. It says usable square footage in the, in the...
The word I said is the sanctuary area, uh, without, uh, other, uh, structured rooms, yeah, exactly. With the structures room and another ancillary item, which does, uh, allow for deduction of the areas that are not simply usable, I mean, the table area is...
I think something that's stationary, that cannot be moved, like Maricopa, I think you can deduct, you cannot deduct chairs.
No, that's, that's, that's basically the discussion I have with the architect. Who can take out the tables and chairs?
Joe, what do you give him?
I take some of the points I should have reviewed, the architectural plan, a little further before I put stuff on my plan. I've come up with...
This plan shows one ninety-four.
No, that's number...
No, so what I gave you is just a hatching area to show you what I calculated, um, but I, the number I came up with was one thousand, one hundred ninety-seven square feet.
Can you show us how you got to that, Joe? How many square feet would you say are on the structural basis?
Uh, I did not specifically, uh, calculate the bookcase, what I did was take the hatch area on the document submitted, which will, uh, will put end of A four, uh, so you can see that that hatch area, as calculated by my office, is one thousand, one hundred ninety-seven square feet.
Excuse me, chairman, uh, I'm going to read the, the, the definition I have, my version of the UVO as to what the main sanctuary is, and we'll see if it matches up.
First.
Um, I hope this is the correct version, I believe it's been changed.
John?
The UVO says, "Main sanctuary area..."
Seventh third?
"The main sanctuary area shall not include secondary sanctuary space, mikvah, hallways, bathroom, kitchen, or other ancillary and or supportive rooms." So where does bookcase appear?
I know traditionally I have heard about the Bima being excluded before. Is Bima always in the middle? I feel like...
Yes.
Not usually at the wall?
That's Maricopa.
Uh, okay. I know I've referenced the Bima being excluded from the...
I always knew something that's stationary, that is not movable, you know, you can't, it's not usable space, but I may be wrong.
Let's just, you know, not argue over how many angels dance on the head of a pin. I mean, is it, is it too big or is it too small? I mean, how, how many square feet is your actual usable space per your testimony?
One thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven square feet.
You know, and, and just eye-balling this, Mr. Vogt, do you believe that that's an irrational conclusion?
Uh, emphasis with eye-balling, in my eye, that's a higher rate, yes.
Now, now, does it make a big difference as, i- i- is there a major consequence whether we're up by a hundred or two hundred square feet in terms of parking, or...
Well, at the end of the day, the board is going to have to be satisfied, based on their understanding of, of, of the structure, based on the area, is to propose all street parking act.
You know, I, I, I don't know that...
I'm trying to give you a bunch of information.
You know, I think how thick the bookshelves are, aren't going to make a difference to the number of, uh, people who go to pray at the shul or not, you know, it's a...
Does this include the second floor?
Uh, no, sanctuary area is always as indicated, the main sanctuary.
So what can be on the second floor?
Uh...
Mezzanine for...
Yeah, the mezzanine area?
For ladies, for...
Yeah.
Are they going to come to the shul?
Ask them.
I mean, are we using the space? Why is that happening?
It's a women's section.
Yeah, you say it, why is it not being counted?
It's, it's, by definition of the ordinance, it says no secondary sanctuary being counted. Correct. It was part of, uh, our...
That's correct.
So, Joe... I don't know why it's called a secondary sanctuary, it has that... Okay. When the ladies' fifth is not part of the...
The ladies' front, I'm finding shadows, and all the hallways in the wall.
Okay, so you don't want to give any parking for that reason, but why don't we just count it, and then say what the deduction, that you don't want to give any parking? Okay, so, Joe, according to your calculations, I think you testified that it was thirteen ninety-seven.
Correct.
So roughly fourteen hundred square feet.
Roughly fourteen hundred.
Square feet.
Based on the ordinance, that requires six parks.
And tell me how you got to that?
Six parking stalls, the first eight hundred square feet is deducted, and one is still a hundred square feet, thereon, up to two thousand, or not, we don't see a two thousand, it was one for one hundred for that extra six hundred.
Why, why is the first deducted? What's the first, uh...
Uh, that's how it's written in the ordinance.
How's it written? Could I hear it?
If place of worship became eight hundred square feet, the main sanctuary is, there is a Bima requirement for parking. And if more than eighty hundred square feet, they give a ratio of place of harm, being a square foot, and everyone can give, between eight hundred and nineteen hundred square feet, they require one parking stall for every one hundred feet of twelve hundred.
But so, it, it specifically, even when it's more than eight hundred, it excludes the first deduction?
That's the way it means.
Did you change, did you change that? We asked for it to be changed, I don't know if it got into order. I think it did, but they didn't, they didn't put on that order.
You know, what, one way is you could ask for revised architectural plans from the architect, if there's questions about this, and have them come back, um, you know, that, everyone's in a hurry, you know?
Uh, uh, you see, I, I don't know that I'm necessarily against it, everybody lives, I just want to have factual information here, and I don't think we're giving any factual information, I don't think the correct area is being calculated. That's factual information here, let's say that everybody lives here, I need to have fifteen spaces, but I'm only giving six, everybody lives here, and...
You know, the, the idea is to do it right, and we've been trying to have an emphasis on having accurate plans, um, and, you know, this is supposed to be caught at the plan reviews, and it really puts the board in an imposition when we have imprecise drawings. I know it's nobody's fault, but, you know, that said, in, in most other towns, you would have to come back with revised plans.
Mr. Chairman, there's been, one other point, too. They say there's going to be a basement, but there's no basement plan.
Right.
So what are we going to do with all that square footage?
Right.
That's in a basement.
So...
You don't have a lot, a lot of square footage without use. You don't build without use.
So you testified the basement is storage only?
No, basement's gonna have a mix room.
A mix room?
And it's gonna have a kiddish room.
So we don't have a plan?
Yeah, and without having, and without having it on a plan, the neighbors can't scrutinize it, you know, it's, um, well, we don't know that. We don't know if there's people who are, who are against it. And, and the board also has a responsibility, um, to the community at large, where there's such parking and traffic issues, I think they really have to understand that. And I don't know what you want to do, if you want to go forward, or if you want to have them come back with revised plans.
I'm just gonna read whatever it says that, about it, you know?
Yeah.
I just want to say also, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for this or against this, but firstly, don't think we should be, uh, deleting Bima space and bookshelf space when we're calculating square foot. I'm not saying I'm for or against, and I think, I think to Ellie's point, you know, to say, look, we need ten spaces, but all we can provide is six, that's all we could do, and then, and then we could decide whether or not we want to, we want to hear that.
The legal notice, the legal notice actually, um, requested that it's provided, so the action, the, the...
Okay. But we don't have the information in front of us.
And that's fine, but you know, but I mean, if they're reading the ordinance, it's, it's pretty clear that you not, you don't delete Bima and bookshelf space, yeah, it's pretty clear that it's main sanctuary, period.
Well, then the architect's plans are accurate, because...
Right, so...
The architect's plan is seventeen hundred...
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying for or against, I'm just saying, and, and I'm not saying for this particular application, i- in general, let's not split hairs about Bimas and bookshelves, and, and where the urn is and everything else.
So on something...
I just want to point out that the architect's plans, as far as the, the square footage of the sanctuary itself, is seventeen eighty-five, correct?
So Mrs. Weinstein, on seventeen eighty-five, how many, we only talked anything, if they give eight hundred first?
Eighteen hundred, ten parking spaces.
Do we need ten parking spaces?
Do we need ten parking spaces?
Seventy five, ten parking spaces.
And you're providing six.
We're providing, uh...
We're providing five on the flat. Uh, now, uh, what I have prepared...
Okay, so, so, I think that's, that should be your testimony. You need, you need ten, you're only providing five, and now, you're asking for variance, let's see how you could, uh...
And now there's no ambiguity with, with what the architect says, they can see the architect's...
Where the Bima is.
Correct, it is correct.
But then, I, I, I would also like to know if you would improve the upstairs, the gallery, how many parking spaces would you need there? Well, I think there were...
I think there was testimony that there is no...
So...
No, the gallery, it's in, it's in the...
The gallery, I think... What are you calling it up there? What are you...
The women's section.
The women's section.[1561.12]
Correct, it is correct.
But then, I would also like to know if you would improve the upstairs, the gallery, how many parking spaces would you need there?
I think Terry...
I think there was testimony that there is no...
So...
No, the gallery, it says, maybe it's...
The gallery, I think... What are you calling it up there?
The women's section.
The women's section.
It's the women's section, but the women, the community have a priority.
Well, I think we should speak to the following point, the ordinance does not require any parking except for the main sanctuary, period, that's what it is. So the main sanctuary is seventeen hundred square feet, you need ten parking spaces. The other areas, yes, we would like to see parking, but the ordinance doesn't require it, so that's what it is.
Okay, so basically testimony on that.
So you're not penalized based on having areas that don't require parking, so go forward.
This one we don't have to say, they come, they don't come, it doesn't require, that's it.
Under those standards, ten parking stalls required in both sanctuary areas. We're proposing five parking stalls perpendicular to the main aisle across the apartment, across the west property. Would like to bring your attention, we do show a thirty-one foot aisle across that parking block. Previously, we've seen on the plan, at the little bit, but I do want to, so the board has on the back eleven, we did prepare the thirties in eighty-three. It shows that with the twenty-four foot aisle, we do have two parallel parking stalls here. Now, those don't need the ordinance's requirement of nine by inch stall. But would like to bring your attention, RSIS, the width of a parallel parking stall under RSIS is seven feet, we have seven feet here, we also have the necessary depth to provide those two parking stalls. Although it's not compliant with the standard of the ordinance, compliant with other standards of view all throughout the state, RSIS. So under that, we utilize those two stalls, we provide seven stalls on the side. In addition, as we indicated, the rabbi does own the property behind me, has a five-bedroom house there, requires three parking stalls, and has four, so it's not part of this application, but there is one additional stall available there. And lastly, across the street is a vacant property that's noted on the DPD website, GeoWeb specifically, as a known contaminated sites list, on the known contaminated sites list is identified as a technically active, if that makes sense. Just right on that, that would be eight grade, A four, you're right. Again, and four was that, that had stopped.
What does it mean that it's contaminated?
So contaminated site means the site is difficult to improve, therefore, if that property isn't approved, then we would have an additional non-street parking available in front of it, where there's no development, uh, the ruling by way of driveway, or you utilize the...
How wide is Fourth Street over there?
Fourth Street is about twenty-eight feet wide.
And there's legal parking on one side?
Legal parking on one side.
It's on the side where the contaminated getting saved, that's the side that permits parking, so all in front of that area.
How many cars would be built to get in there?
How many cars could you get into that area?
Uh, well, it's through between London and Belton, but I would say probably four or five stalls there.
So two homes of property?
I don't know the...
You just go pull one off somebody else's property, you're wrong.
No, not on the property.
One at a time, one at a time.
I'm sorry, it's the bank industry, it's a vacant, it's a rather, it's contaminated, at this point, it's not available.
What we're saying is there's ample extra non-street parking, I don't want your driveway that makes you can't park.
I see.
We're not suggesting that they park on somebody's...
What was that property that's contaminated? What was that, what was it there before?
What was there before?
You don't know? Mr. Franklin, you know which property is that?
Max Arnold's junkyard.
So it's contaminated, so the one that he is in. Please be quiet in the audience, you cannot hear.
How many trouble with batteries?
John, you're remembering which property, it's the one with a star on it. John just said it was an old junkyard.
It was a junkyard there.
Remember the junk?
Max Arnold's, Max Arnold's junkyard.
Max Arnold's junkyard.
Only there sixty years ago.
Mr. Franklin, let's move over to the car.
Have you been in contact with the neighbor, the side neighbor that you asked for variance? And they're both here?
They're both here.
They both agree?
Side neighbor, side neighbor.
You agree with that?
Side neighbor, side neighbor.
Everybody's okay with it, okay, side neighbor is yours. I would like to ask, if in order to, everybody raise your hand, who walks the shul, who lives in the immediate, the three blocks? Okay, well.
I guess the three extra spaces don't matter.
Is there anybody in the audience who's opposed to this application, please raise your hand? You'll have your chance in a minute. Thank you. Okay, is there anything, going through the report, is there anything that you don't, please be quiet, please, is there anything you can't agree with?
Well, for relief, we will report the fence that's around the property, we do request a design waiver, providing a right-of-way dedication, existing street, entire history is thirty-three feet wide, that right of way is, we would request a waiver from providing a dedication from the back. We are requesting a waiver from the street tree requirement, once we request an easement in lieu of a right-of-way dedication, that easement would cover for the curb line, so it's needed, because it puts a landscaping across the front, and the alley is down there with the white, that last area.
Terry, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We are recording the trash in progress on site, complying with the DEW's recent general ordinance.
Did you meet with them?
We did not meet with them, we've had a number of meetings with them on a number of tools, and ten by eighteen...
I would like to request the future, please meet DPD before you come to...
Well, DPD does a review now, automatically, they get sent the plans and they issue a review every day.
Okay, I want to make sure it fits, if they can get the trucks in, to pick it up, what would they use on this, the containers or a front loader?
They would use the front loader, again, we have a very wide aisle, because it can drive straight back to the dumpster, pick it up, and back out.
John, does it work?
Yeah, it works.
It work, and back right out?
Correct.
Then I can't use those tools.
But where you put it, you got to watch you don't lose the one parking post, so it doesn't back into the...
I know, what does it say then?
We have some room to shift that over, all we have there is the handicap aisle, so there's no requirement that anything or anybody can back out of that, we can serve the center as more, through our assessment.
Okay.
Other than that, no objections, any other comments in terms of letter, certainly provide those that should be made.
Okay, any questions from any board members?
I think we should have a basement plan.
Okay.
Show what's going on there in the basement, so we've got a full set that we're voting on.
Okay.
I'd like to table it until we get the basement plan.
Let's allow, do you want to hear what the public has to say on this application?
Sure.
Okay, I would open it to the public now. Anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Chief Lieutenant Allen, Abraham Hall, this time, about twenty mile avenue, building in the north of me, on the side of the fourth quarter for a change.
Okay, you have to be affirmed for a change.
Sir, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, you want to support?
I'm here tonight as a private assistant, and as a friend of the rabbi, again, I've known the rabbi about thirty-five years, we've all gathered in school, watched him over this shul, and we, the basement where he is now, we have, wanted to have the basement to create a nice sanctuary, a nice sanctuary, a nice shul for the community. From what I've seen and what I've noticed, I think it'll be a proper thing to have this competition approved, for one, for one of the reasons we're used right now, the neighbors basically have to leave the basement where he is now, and you only keep the basement of the shul is to see if it'll be, we don't need to make a shul. Now that he's in his room, and for sure, he wants to take the shul back from his own private life, and his own private use, so that he can use it for his own family, and therefore build a shul that will really accommodate all the higher neighborhood. If our ideas that he or board members please approve this application, and make it happen. I know that there is a parking issue over here, however, but if you notice just now how everyone is recording their, discreetly, from the neighborhood, they will dominate their neighborhood, and of course, there's no simple, it's a big plus, because then it won't be able to accommodate it, but it's a good shul, it's initial, I mean, and make this so, I mean, they don't have to, we make worse the track pattern, as well as to come to it, and I thank you.
Thanks very much. Hey, next. Please state your name and record, and you have to be affirmed.
Speaker Monica Stigel.
Speak into the mic, you should hear.
Speaker Monica Stigel.
Thanks.
Sir, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, you want to support?
My dear honorable board, my friend John Franklin, I was born in Lakewood, fifty years ago, we go back together, as, I never dreamt that I'm going to live in the Ridge area, I always dreamt I'd live in the Sixth Street area around Ishida, but as the town grew, and I rented, and we came to a point where we had a firehouse, I moved into East Fifth Street, Ridge, both neighborhoods. The first week we left my house, the first week, we decided to police back now, we'll stay inside, I had a shot in my gun. After that, I decided, this area has to be built, so I decided, gave away my basement, we built the shul, and that shul paid, that the Ridge area today, there were some houses in Lakewood, is because of this shul, it is congregation. The congregation, first of all, I'd like to thank all the congregants who are here today who came out to support the congregation, it's unbelievable to see that every Shabbos, how everybody comes, and they come to the shul, but I feel very bad that I know that I'm stuck here, so many people in the little basements, I really want to expand now, and the only property that was held for by the terrible lawsuit, was right in back of my house. The reason why we picked that property is, two reasons, for the board to understand very strongly, my house and the property are back-to-back, I'm going to open up the back of my property, people are able to walk from East Fifth Street, people are able to come from East Fourth, and this nobody has a problem with any parking, and right in front of my house, I have ten spots that are going to be usable, and they're useful right now, there's no house, we built it, everything is built there, because there's a house already built over there, and I have ten spots in front of my house, and one spot by me, so that's going to be good for the East Fifth Street people, and the East Fourth Street people, also, everybody's able to come to the shul. As we know, that so far, the last five years I was there, and all my kids are here, we would never have found more parking, because nobody ever decided to come with a car, because if you wanted to come with a car down the Ridge area, you'll listen to me. So that's why it's better to build the shul, and not to take your back to shul as you know, like, and, 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 I have a very honorable board, understanding what it means to take their responsibility and to go and build a shul, and we're doing it here, just like you, board, gave away your time, you're coming here for the people, we're helping the people, I'm also here for the people there to make them, to have a shul, to judge out with the doctrine, and really, our shul is basically the Shabbos shul of the area, when people come to the doctrine. Mr. Franklin, thank you for being here tonight, just love seeing you, and seeing all the board members over here, and we hope that the board approves it, and this will be a great, it was a Shabbos in Lakewood, all the years that I'm here, that I built the shul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public that would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. If they state your name and record, and you have to be affirmed, speak into the mic, speak loud. There's more to the side.
Um, Yanni Bronski.
Sir, you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, you want to support?
Yes, I would. I live on Ridge Avenue, my block there is, we started out with the first six Jewish families on the block, and it's not, we developed Ridge Avenue, and that section, and then another eight came up on the corner of Ridge and East Fourth, across the street from me, another cul-de-sac, we built another eight houses, and further down, another cul-de-sac, another six houses went up, now Main Street, and I'm going to be honest, I mean, tell the board, they improved density after density, after density, in townhouses, duplexes, and literally, in the three square blocks of where I live, there isn't a shul, there isn't a shul in the three square blocks, Ridge, East Fifth, East Fourth, going down either way, except for the old shul, which is exactly three square blocks away, the old shul, I don't know if anybody knows where that is, has a shul on Park Avenue and corner of Ridge and East Fourth. And all these families, I'm not, I would even say there's over a hundred or fifty families that live in this area, and it's literally within a four hundred to five hundred foot walking distance, not more, there's over three hundred families living there, you can go down, you can take it, and drive around there, John Franklin, you go out and check out all the garbage cans, how many do you set up over here? You drive down Ridge Avenue or East Fifth, you just see the garbage trucks, just, he doesn't drive, he's parked, he just pushes forward, another garbage can, another garbage can, another, he just doesn't stop, and now, because of Ridge Avenue, because that's how much density here, there's a ton of people on the traffic, if the buses are packed up on track on garbage, I mean, I hope he gets garbage picked out at night, instead of the morning, with the bussing and garbage truck pickups. But as the reality of the neighborhood, there is so many, I lived here already for over seven years, I have never driven to this shul, I have just walked, and one time I show, I have three boys, and there isn't enough seats in the shul, my kids always get up, we give away the seats to the people that come here, there aren't enough places to have it, and we really are asking for this, various variants, and hardship, 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 we have three hundred families living in this neighborhood, with out of the shul, and the basement is going to be a mikvah channel, we need a mikvah, we need one for the event, and we need one for the way, that's the entire basement is going to be, and that's why there's no plan really, because just trying to figure out what to do with the event side, and the other side, when people are ladies, they both ride and I put it, that is why we're looking to shoot for, and we really ask the board to please reconsider, they have to understand, this neighborhood has an amazing density, if we were going to buy a fifteen thousand or twenty thousand square foot lot, put up a parking that we should have been able to put on properly as the ordinance requires, we would have been paying three million dollars just for the lot, because the board has granted variance after variance for every five thousand square foot lot to put on a duplex here. In this neighborhood, that is our hardship, there isn't any land available, there's no lots that can be bought, and financially, be able to buy at a cost sufficient price to build the shul. There are over three hundred families in this neighborhood, there isn't a shul, and we desperately ask the board, please build a shul, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public that would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Say, no one, we'll close it to the public. Mrs. Weinstein, I've heard testimony from the rabbi, the shul is mainly for Shabbos, the mikvah also downstairs, discreetly for the shul and only for Shabbos, it's not for the weekend, right?
Rabbi, can I ask a question?
Huh?
I may just take it, this is all the Shabbos, I can go to the Shabbos.
Okay.
Congress.
Okay, I would ask for a motion.
I'm going to make the motion to approve that application, Mr. Vogt.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the second. Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Stigel.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Rockland.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
I can say the reason I passed this plan is not complete.
I know.
And I'm going to do that in every plan that we get, it's not complete, please, just the plan is complete.
Okay, you see. Mrs. Weinstein, you heard what Mr. Franklin says, it's not a, it's a hundred-term right. Please be quiet.
The new technical meeting set up, that's why we're going to address most of that question.
This won't happen again, this was a prayer treaty.
This is from before the new system, and as has, as we've heard, represents the happening, the current happening in the system, I think it's great idea, it's great, it's hard to choose.
And I would ask you to give over to your applicants.
It's not, it's not out of the stuff that you like.
Okay, and it was all in credit for Mr. Franklin, so, okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Please be quiet, we have a lot of work still to do tonight.
I just wanted to update the, the, I just, we had, we had, we had, we had, we had a certain application, and they just want to complete something, what they're coming from the board. Well, it's discussed, yeah, it was on our, it was there last week, it's not that many more than just that, but, going forward, in future techniques, and future submissions, that applications are not being scheduled, that we receive the applied application, and we're comfortable that the applications are complete, not necessarily perfect, but they're consistent, and if there's discrepancy between the site plans and the architectural that happens with applications, that should not be happening, like you have in front of you tonight, possibly one or two more years, you have applications that are going to pass forward on your old technical system. I, I cherish the board, and you see the application, if you don't feel comfortable with what you're seeing, do exactly what you want, but until we get the new pipeline set up, you're going to see it's going to be applications. If you feel you have sufficient detail to, to feel that you do not, it's...
Like today's technical meeting was already based on the new, new ways of the...
If this application had come in three months later, you would not have had it here in this condition tonight, we would have brought up the issue about, you don't have architectural plans that match the site, that's in the basement, and that would have been ranked on you. What you have in front of you is based on the technical system that was in place prior to that, and as you're aware, Jim, for our meeting last week, and that's, that's now the change.
I'm sorry I missed that, I'm sorry I missed that other meeting, I really wanted to attend it, I was tied up.
I'm sorry you did, too.
Yeah. But, but John, I think everybody quoted you, and you heard from Terry, loud and clear.
Excellent.
We're taking this very serious.
Yes.
And I want all attorneys and all professionals to hear it, Terry.
Excellent, excellent.
Okay, come next, Alan.
I see twenty-six.
So you're ready.
Stay by my home and health, it makes like a retail building, other time.
Okay, Terry, would you like to go through the...
First, for our then, for the city. So there's a waiver to include the proposed submission motion, founding point, and the I, um, it's similar to this application, we do not believe that this law, but the motion, and we support that, and similarly, the IAS, we also recommend we, we say, we do that.
Do you have a motion to grant the waivers? Move, move the second, which second is it?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion.
Continuing on with the chairman, section two, on the view, comparison required Uh, continuing on with the chairman, section two, on the view, uh, comparison required for the existing off-site parking, uh, to, 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 uh, this is within sixty-five feet of the centerline of the state highway. Um, Ryan, you're going to have a testimony as to the accuracy of the parking, uh, and the nature of, of, of the legal assault act, correct? Okay. Um, continuing on, uh, the current testimony for, from the applicant, is not being submitted. There is not seen any sign barriers at this time, is that correct? Correct, or, 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 okay. Um, I believe that's it on the barriers review, uh, and then finally, on the design waivers, uh, you have to land the buffer waivers twenty-five feet, design waivers, uh, for completed curb and sidewalk along the ground, as far as, if you have your testimony on that. Uh, design waivers require provided tree trees, uh, shade trees, utility units, uh, and design waivers require from provided shopping cart corrals, uh, because it's a bit of a challenge to, uh, okay, that's all we need, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. We, the chairman.
How's it going?
I'm perfect, and we have the applicant. Uh, as Terry indicated, we are here, as everyone's aware, this is Seal Square Shopping Center, uh, nine. Uh, there's a rendering below the floor here, it does not show the new building, the idea, this is what the new, updated shopping center looks like, uh, the applicant has, has taken two.
With all the eyes, with all the cars.
Yeah, but that's, we're, Scott Hannel, we have some traffic testimony, parking testimony. Um, but again, since acquiring, and then the nature upgrades the shopping center and the, 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 the township, um, there is excess land appropriate, the site is, uh, approximately eleven and a half acres. Um, what we have before the, what we see there is, we have the, the applications for an additional building, approximately thirteen thousand, uh, twenty-one square feet building, uh, for additional detail, uh, space. Um, the site that we're taking, we're going to be, uh, utilizing a current section of parking, uh, however, we are still going to be complying with the required parking standards. Um, with the new building, we'll be required to have approximately, approximately, we require to have five hundred parking spaces. We have five hundred parking spaces, even with the new additional building. So the board shouldn't be concerned that we're taking away parking spaces, that aren't gonna be there. But for one existing variance, which is there today, doesn't matter what happens with the application, there's existing variance, uh, we permit the, uh, wall street parking to remain, uh, in the front yard, which is less than sixty-five feet from the centerline of the park. That's there today, and we're going to see granted, uh, again, we're asking for the same variance today, um, as, as the other buildings are not changing.
The only thing I wanna hear testimony, if they have a widening root nine, will that?
We will, we will, and I, besides Brian, uh, Flannery's near here, because testimony also Scott Hannel, who's going to give the traffic and the parking according, and, and, we will hear, I'll wait for the experts, but I don't want to hear your opinion, that at most times, if the parking lot's happened, we're going to get a parking lot that's five hundred parking spaces, and at any given time, somewhere between two hundred and thirty parking spaces, they're not being utilized. Uh, again, as, as the landlord, you know, you always, you have to give, you don't have to park and not have tenants. So we're not gonna put ourselves, not gonna show ourselves, we're fucking to have a building, and we can't put tenants in. Um, with regard to the sign, we're gonna comply with the ordinances, and, um, and we'll spread Brian Flatter, I just, just wanna add that, the one variance that we do have, is the existing addition, the benefit of adding another variable to the township's, uh, tax rule, much more outweighs, uh, the negative of, of existing variance, that's not called anywhere at the moment.
The only thing I have to make sure, if they have a widening root nine, we have the room for it.
All right, William's getting concerned, and we're gonna get the expert's testimony, right? This is fine, thanks for your, Brian.
I do hope in my lifetime to see root nine again.
Probably a promise done in nineteen.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Nineteen sixty-nine, we're gonna do it.
What's your point?
You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flattery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional, and an air professional plan. Uh, as Adam indicated, and you read the report, uh, this is your addition to a building in Seal Square. I have two renderings, A one is sheet three of the plan submitted, and the colors of the buildings are displayed. A two is the same sheet, I just outlined the building in blue, where the new building will be, and I showed the, and pink, the desired typical section of the D O T, which is the most that they would ever think. Uh, that desired typical section would, uh, impact twenty parking spaces.
Which, which sheet is that?
Sheet three, sheet three doesn't show the desired typical section. I added a pink on the plan, so the board could see, uh.
Okay, so, so you're testifying that if the D O T widen root nine, we would lose maximum twenty parking spaces?
That's right. And first of all, in my opinion, if the D O T does widen root nine, without impacting those twenty, they ask for desired typical section, which they take some beyond the parking, or, or beyond the actual page. It's my testimony that it widens without impacting those, but if they do, the worst basis they're gonna take is twenty parking spaces, and, uh, this property, the parking, the way it's laid out now, is, is a nice comfortable parking layout. Nobody tries squeezing any empty places, there certainly are areas on the site, and you can see open areas, uh, in, in a couple different places, where additional twenty parking spaces could be, could be put in, so we can take back, with the possibility in the future, when it gets widened, because it will get widened in the future, we just don't know when. Uh, and, and hopefully, it'll be soon, the improvements they're talking now don't impact the parking.
I just think you should go for a variance on it, just because, that you knew.
Well, my testimony, first of all, is that, uh, we don't need a variance for the existing parking. I would respectfully disagree with various interpretations, the ordinance is the parking places were lawfully, uh, constructed, there've been applications on this site since the ordinance was changed, where it hasn't been determined that, uh, a variance was required, so, so they, they did there. Uh, and, uh, but, a- and as we normally do, in a bonus, of course, is, I'm gonna give you the testimony for, first of all, what would happen if we needed parking spaces, and, and my testimony is that on five hundred, and this is five, and the years have to be a little more specific, four hundred ninety-nine parking space parking lot, we could fit the additional twenty spaces that we, we're losing, uh, in some of the areas, just by better configuring the parking layout. Uh, additionally, Scott Hannel is gonna give the testimony on the actual parking usage. And, and anybody that's been related, and have been a number of different uses in this site, this area where this building's going in is always open, uh, that the, uh, it is a parking area that was certainly larger than needed. The parking requirement for shopping center is one for two hundred twenty-five square feet. By that calculation, we need four hundred ninety-one. Uh, Terry's report brings it down, typically, they take the restaurant out separate, and make approximation on, on the restaurant engineering. My opinion is, if you have a shopping center, uses are in a shopping center, or offices in retail restaurants. Every shopping center that I know has restaurants, and the parking is, is taken into account, one for two hundred twenty-five, that counts for some, some restaurant in it. Our plan was submitted saying that we need, uh, four hundred ninety-one, we have four hundred ninety-nine. So that's eight more than the ordinance required.
According to Terry, if you separate the restaurant, how much, how much would you need?
Um.
I just think that if you need, go for the variance.
He made it a proxy.
We're, we're asking for the existing, the, we're at, that we've noticed for, and asked for, the existing variance for these parking spaces that are within the front, center line. So we'd ask for that.
According to Terry, how many parking spaces do you need?
By Terry's approximation, where, where he said fifty percent of the burden came in patronage, uh, and, and I measured, uh, a rough measurement today, uh, and it's, uh, it's less than that. I figured it would be about a thousand square feet. But if we go with Terry's, with Pat, he's saying we need five hundred and ten, uh, where we have four hundred ninety-nine. Uh, we're gonna need a testimony that shows, first of all, if the four hundred ninety-nine that are provided are more than adequate. Uh, my testimony is that four hundred ninety-one is what's required, ordinance. We're asking for a variance for the, uh, parking within the sixty-five feet, uh, from root nine, even though it's there, and we, and we don't think we need the extra variance. Uh, and additionally, the twenty parking spaces that are there, at, at such time as the D O T comes and says, we can take those twenty parking spaces away, there's plenty of places on this site we should reconfigure the parking, uh.
But it shouldn't be deficient.
That we will not be deficient in the future.
I just wanted to point out that I believe our numbers are more conservative in nature. Uh, we've actually talked with the applicant offline about this project, and what you're gonna hear testimony very shortly is, the numbers that we are using, that we stand by, are, are basically accurate. What you're looking at here is really a shared parking scenario. Uh, there's a study that was submitted by the applicant's traffic consultant, and I'm sure they're, they're gonna hear testimony shortly, that functionally, what's been observed out there, irrespective of the ordinance, I agree, Matt, it's actually functioning with much, much less length, they do the testimony soon.
Yes, and, and so that includes my testimony, and Scott come up, and, and you'll get that. So parking, my testimony.
I think that'll bring in the vote.
Yes, my, my testimony as a planner is, that we comply with the ordinance, and we certainly provide more parking than required, and we'll ask for sufficient parking in the future, that, that we don't need to go below the, uh, four hundred ninety-nine parking spaces, uh, that would currently be posted. Uh, the other items in, uh, in Terry's report, uh, with, one was with respect to signs, we're not yet considering sign variances, design waivers, uh, for providing landscape offer, and this is an existing, uh, shopping center that's definitely, uh, bigger than I have, uh, and I will definitely, for I have any right here. Uh, and John was probably here when it was built, but he'd be one of the few ones that, uh, was, was here when, when this shopping center was built. Uh, so, it's an existing situation, the neighbors are all accustomed to the buffer that's there. Uh, item two says, we're requesting a dive, the design waiver from, uh, providing curb and sidewalk, the applicant's not gonna ask for that design, if the applicant, they're gonna propose curb and sidewalk, we will bond for the curb and sidewalk, as I testified earlier, this applicant also got a letter from the D O T indicating that they were putting in, so we will post a bond, on the same condition that was imposed last time, that the D O T doesn't do it within a year, then, then we will do it. Uh, the, it's probably gonna take a little longer than that for us, because I'm not getting approvals from the D O T, this, this is gonna require capital approval. So this is, is gonna require a lot, nobody's gonna see any machines out there, Dave, putting that, that building in at any time, uh, quick. Uh, but we will bond for it, as the D O T doesn't do it within that time, year timeframe, we will, uh, commence the putting in curb and sidewalk. Uh, uh, and, and then we get to, uh, the design waivers for providing, uh, street trees, uh, and shade trees, utilities, uh, it's an existing situation, we can certainly have a shade for utility even, and if the board, the board's engineer wants trees, we'll put in, however many trees you want, and it's, it's not something that, uh, we need to run. Uh, and, uh, four is the design waiver required for providing shopping cart corrals. We don't feel we need them, it's an existing situation, we're not getting stores that are gonna have shopping carts, these are, these are small, very populated stores, uh, with the size of the building that's there, that they certainly don't need shopping cart corrals, so.
The existing, the stores.
There's existing, there's existing supermarkets there.
They need, they need the cars.
They have existing, right? We're, 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 we're building, designing.
They're small, small.
Um, he said, as indicated in Terry's report, there will be private pickups for the train. Uh, he questioned some of the, uh, the parking and how it works, because if you're out there now, uh, there's a lot of temporary, uh, trailers that are, that in place, this, all of them are gonna be removed long before, uh, this building is occupied, so we will not give us confidence that parking that's shown on the plan will be available.
You'll rescribe all the parking spaces?
Yes, we will, and, and as part of a, the C E O, uh, the, the engineer's office would certainly make sure that it's striped and there will be parking that's shown on the plan, the total four hundred ninety-nine parking spaces will be available. Hey, I, I could read you the definition of the shopping center, so you understand, uh, what this is, and that's more in relation to the separation that Terry has provided between the restaurant and the stores, and I think the word is, what the shopping center is, and the definition is clear. Uh, in order to justify, we believe that we're acting, uh, if, if we look at the master plan, let's just approve the vision statement on page seven, it says encourage development and rebuilding based on smart growth planning principles, uh, and it's certainly my testimony that this is, is smart growth, we're providing a regular for the town, we're providing needed, uh, shopping opportunities, jobs. Uh, it says provides sufficient, uh, space for educational, recreational, and community facilities, uh, and, and, uh, residential, and, and commercial development, and this provides, uh, a needed, uh, facility as, as well as a good rate for the town. Uh, the municipal land use law, N J S A forty-four fifty-five, D two, under the purposes of the Act, this would encourage this election to guide the appropriate redevelopment of the land state, and the amount of, 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 and this certainly, the vote to generate welfare by providing efficient dualization of the property, the township, and, and it also goes into the, you know, providing variety of uses. Uh, if we do need a variance, uh, relating to parking, it would be a C two variance, we'd have to show relates to a specific piece of property, this would certainly, you need specific pieces of property. The purposes listed in the land issue of law would be advanced, and we want that right, from N J S A forty-four fifty-five, D two. Uh, the variance can be granted without any substantial detriment of public good, and the fact that we're gonna have a traffic engineer tell you there's plenty of parking for this type of facility because of the sheer parking, uh, the variances will not impair the intent, purposes of the zone plan, zoning ordinance, and my, uh, opinion of the, the site that is, uh, virtually forming an application, and then we have to show the benefits that are, that, that are the, uh, mentioned previously, and, and in order for that.
And you agree with the rest of the report, everything else?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions, any board members?
I think that is a shopping cart corral in, in the middle of the lot. There isn't any now.
That's correct.
He mentioned, if they do.
No, no, it's what you mentioned, it's an existing supermarket that doesn't have them, and it functions well without.
But this is a new shop, new, new grocery, new shop, new supermarket.
But it's not gonna be a new, new supermarket, this isn't gonna be a supermarket, these are all, uh.
Ever since they have the new supermarket, this shopping cart's going all over the middle of the parking lot. Maybe we should add one or two, one or two, uh, shopping corrals.
Do you have them on the site added?
Well, it's, by my calculation, we have four hundred ninety-nine parking spaces, and we only need four hundred ninety-one, so we add the additional parking spaces, if the board built that, the shopping cart corral, that the benefits of that outweigh the.
Honestly.
For what?
Honestly, I do, because you have shopping carts all over, you're losing thirty parking spaces, like did you lose one or two? I, I know what I mean to stop, but don't worry, Chris. Okay. Mr. Hannel. You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth before this board?
I do. Scott Hannel, K E N N E L, with, uh, my associates.
On the board, yes, we accept it. Tell, tell me root nine in front of her, it's a level C.
At this location with traffic, yes. All the roads gonna have lost traffic, so it's. And it's a solid section later. And they're installed when? Soon. And they're installed when? When was that installed, when will the traffic safely start?
No, no, we're, we're, we're.
Is that at this site, so this function's safe, level seven, stay at this site.
Okay.
That was, uh, detailed in our report, day December fourth.
Okay.
As far as we're talking about that, as far as the expansion to the hotel area, N J D O T has a criteria, in terms of whether or not you access permanent, as we filed, and you need to have, generate in excess of a hundred peak hour trips. Uh, using their methodology, this additional retail area will generate fifty-three additional trips, so therefore, the site qualifies, so let her know interest, we've submitted that document for D O T's concurrence, that's your board's end.
They have to prove it.
Correct. I'm confident you will, Jonathan, you will. Uh, as far as the parking, uh, there was a supplemental report submitted, January fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Correct that, on the letter, it says twenty seventeen, but it's actually twenty eighteen. But, um, as Brian testified, we have more to add to the parking on site, with the proposed building and the remaining parking supply, that will be approximately about a parking ratio of four point five for one thousand square feet, industry standards, urban land use. Industry standards, the Urban Land Institute and Institute of Transportation Engineers would recommend four spaces for 1,000 square feet for developments such as this size and with the type of uses. And that also includes restaurant uses as included in our small store footage. Based on the parking studies, and I've driven by this site for 25 years and always noticed approximately 57% of the space is empty, but based on our recordings, the parking demand is, it was no more than two, a parking of 2.0. So, parking demand for a shopping center that I was told within our parking counts is 98.5% leased and occupied. Its parking generation is half of what the nationally recommended rates are. And even if you consider the loss of 20 parking spaces along Route 9, a few additional parking spaces for car corrals, there could be more than adequate parking to support the existing uses as well as closing.
I think Brian testified that you won't have any loss on it, but there's room on the site to add that 20.
Correct. Scott, that's what I'm saying, if you don't make any changes to the site, you leave it as is and you just remove those 20 spaces, and then you say, correct, all right. Is there no change in the site traffic?
Well, you don't know the future uses, it could get busy. I would like to make sure that in case we need it, there is ample room to put this spot.
Well, and we comply with the national recommended standards. I mean, this site, the way it's set out, it's actually happened with the statewide U9. This additional area could provide parking to make up that loss. But even without those, I'm still confident, based on the parking trends on site, the building we're adding, which is approximately 12% more of building area, and the fact that there's in excess of 250 parking spaces available, that will not be issued with the new building.
Quick question, Chairman.
Yes.
You indicated in your report, you did parking counts. The counts were from 150 to 180 parking cars, right?
That's correct.
And you consider those times in either eight or near feet.
Correct. And one of the data collection days was the Sunday before Hanukkah, which I expect would have been a little bit higher with people buying at the supermarket. But yes, that's representative of the times.
So, based on your calculations, you'll have over twice the parking on the site the way it is now, even if you took away what was in the long term?
That's correct.
And if you needed to, worst case, you could re-write that on the standard correctly compared to the national minimum, and actually, the given spaces, if you had to.
If we had to, correct. And again, the other positive of this plan is where this new building's proposed, it's underutilized and there's no parking there. So again, it's being cited at a location where it's not going to compete with the existing users on site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions? So no one would open to the public? Anybody from the public who'd like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Please take your name directly.
Shlody McMartin. Do you permit me to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
Hello?
You can pick up the whole table.
Something you have to say. A board member mentioned something very good about shopping carts. But I don't think it's a problem of not having spots for it. I just think there's a shopping center, they call MPGS. I don't know what the Chicago's is, but it means sloppy, sloppy, sloppy. They don't know how to take the carts and put an exit for the store. So, it's not exactly that they don't have space for it. It's just that they don't feel that they have to do the manpower to take care of shopping carts or go over the thing. But again, you might be more familiar with that, this community shopping over there. So obviously, it's, I will thank that, sort of think that he mentioned something first time.
You put the quarters inside, then everybody puts it back?
What?
You put it with the quarters, and everybody puts it back?
It's not, it's not how to put it back or not. If there's no quarters, the people don't put it back. It's the responsibility of the store owner. The problem is, he's trying to be cheap and he's cutting out a service. That is MPGS, nonprofit grocery store. That's what happens when you have nonprofits for grocery stores. But I'm not going to here to speak about MPGS. Then they were talking about parking. First of all, as I want to say, is they're saying is that there's a lot of parking over there. Again, it's about MPGS, is a city from a version against that store, it might be cursed. That's just why he doesn't have so much traffic over there. But let's put that thing aside. Now, I wanted to talk about the developer. The developer builds beautiful buildings. And he just, he done the whole outside of the buildings over there, he did a nice job. He does them every week. He has, he has some nice projects. The problem where the developer comes in, where he is very, very dangerous, is the parking. I live across the street of a shopping center that he built. It's a killing zone. And I'm not talking about where people, I don't know why people are not getting killed over there, but I don't know, it's just, it's amazing that people are not getting. Kids are getting knocked over. He promised them they'll put in a light, no light went in. You know, yes, the reason for the guns, how we say it, but by the end of the game, it's dangerous over there. I'm talking about Ellen D. Shopping Center. Now, parking over there, there's no parking over there. There's not enough. He's overflowing the next parking lot that they're going to build over there. So, he did a shared concept, and he was supposed to build upstairs, was supposed to be a symbol at night and downstairs.
I think Evergreen had a variance on parking.
Yes, and they did a shared concept, and obviously, they rented out the whole thing, the offices, not offices. He rented out the whole thing that they care of, the special ed, and everybody parks at the same time. But I'm not speaking, I know that Bernie's objecting. I'm objecting for him. Okay, I will stop speaking about it, no problem.
Okay.
I'm just trying to bring out, like, yeah, be very careful when this developer comes in and he wants some kind of way for parking. Be careful, he has a history of having a dangerous parking lot.
With the testimony from the engineer and the traffic engineer, that there's no variance now on parking. And if the DOT should take away some land, they can supply the extra 20 parking spaces.
I don't know how. I'll ask this question once I finish my session.
The engineer can answer you, I can't answer.
Okay, you want to ask me how you don't have to fit in another 20 spots over here? Maybe you don't just push together the parking spots like this people when we are opening up the door.
If the board has issued that, we certainly, as a condition of resolution, we might will show a sketch of how that can be done, and will show more than...
And you feel comfortable that at least 20?
100%, I looked at it, 100%, more than 20 parking spaces could be accommodated by putting, adding in some of the grass areas and reconfiguring the parking area, which aren't laid out efficiently, if they're laid out to be nice and open the way I think they should be. But if we need to give the 20 spaces because we're not, and we would agree to that as a condition of resolution, we might. If we don't do it, we come back and...
And Terry, you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Terry, Terry, yes, yeah. And Terry says he feels comfortable. Okay, continue.
Okay, that's the reason why I stayed over at night for the last thing that I had. And that is sidewalks.
They're putting it in?
They're not putting it in. You know, that's the reason why I came over here. A lot of times applicants are saying stuff and trying to rail the board. They're giving them the section that they're putting in, and then, and actually, in reality, they're not putting it in. And I won't explain. I'm sorry if I take up a little bit of time, but I came for this. I didn't speak to the previous application, I didn't do my meeting, I was, I'm always speaking about this. Give me just a minute and I'll explain. This neighborhood, they're people walk so much over there, there should be sidewalks over there now. The fact that we have somebody that has a shopping center, and he has no decency. There's pedestrian traffic, he doesn't feel to put in sidewalks now. We have to force him only if we give him the application, we give that approval, to put in sidewalks, but he doesn't feel it, and he has to put it now for the safety of the people that are walking over there. But no, the shopping over there, how do I know the people? They're walking with carriages over there, they're walking with the new hats, with the shakers. You know, you need to see the new, to see the Chicago walking over there. And there's no sidewalks. And they're walking to his shopping center, and he doesn't feel it, and he has to accommodate his customers to bring them, and to you to stay. It's my fault that this board has to sit over here and tell them, it's one good word, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about him not asking for waiver of sidewalks. Brian stood over there and said, it's, oh, put in a bond. The state is coming, the state is putting in sidewalks. We don't want to do it twice. I don't understand what is the problem? The state does it two years from now? Why is only him putting in sidewalks now? Why is the bond? Put in the damn sidewalks, people are getting killed over there. I'm not saying people getting killed over there, people getting killed over there. Let me see the bridge, but we don't want people to get killed over here. People are walking, it should be sidewalks now, not like here from now. If the state will come in in a year from now and put in sidewalks, let them put it in. If they want to relocate the sidewalks, let them put it in. But for the standard applicant, the saying is, I don't want to put in sidewalks. Am I having some misunderstanding? Mr. Chairman, who I am?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying everything you say.
No, 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 it sounds like you feel as that I did misunderstand what's going on over there. You have a different...
No.
I don't need to cross-examine this.
No, because Brian, I want to, Brian just testified that the applicant is willing to put in sidewalks. The only difference is, or he's doing it now, or he's doing it in a year. That's, I think that's why I'm disturbed.
The applicant would agree that before he gets a CO, I need the developing sidewalk for a year.
Okay.
Now, let me ask you a question. Is that not the standard of every application when you don't ask for a waiver?
But you don't need a waiver if you're agreeing to do it before you get a CO. That's the normal standard.
That's the normal standard. Move bond, putting in, waiting for the state to put in, no...
Yeah, we're going to, obviously, we have a standard procedure, which we will post a bond so that we can get started. And then the bond, the police will come in, when it's actually put in, which we're agreeing will be before COs are issued under the...
Is it, I'm interested in Brian, I know he's working for the applicant. Is it possible to request from an applicant if he's asking for a waiver? Or advance or anything like that? Is it possible to ask from an applicant to put in sidewalks before he starts building? Because it's dangerous. I'm not over here talking for the applicant that he wants to save himself some money. I have no left for this money, he has enough. I'm talking about for the safety of the people that are shopping there now. It's dangerous. I don't know why I have to sit over here and argue with you guys, applicants. Please, put in the sidewalks. Just sidewalks, and I asked for hers. Just sidewalks.
So, the question is, can you ask somebody for sidewalks?
Yes.
Can you?
And then board could require you to do that.
Look, I think this is inappropriate request because it's an existing site. I think the appropriate requirement is exactly what we stated we would do, that we will bond for it, and before we get a CO on the new building, we will have it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Adam, you have anything to say? Anybody else in the public who'd like to be heard? Sign no one, we'll close to the public.
Okay, let's look through your cap. We believe the rest of the union will be variant for asking for existing parking within the, 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 step back now until we're done. This is a, we would add another variable to the township without taking down any entries, without, without doing park variance, without squeezing it in. This is a nice site for it, it works. The traffic center says we're operating against 50% of parking. We believe, again, we're applying today. And even if we lose a spot, we will free to raise a condition, and we'll show a plan, and then we can pick up the 40 spots.
Okay, I would, I personally, whatever, but any other board members? I would like, I know that Brian and Mr. Cannell testified that they have more than enough parking right now. But should Route 9 be wide? I would like to keep, not to lose this 25 spots. To find wherever, wherever you can do it. Because I know every supermarket, every store here in Lakeport. Right now, you may have enough parking. A few years down the line, it gets busy, you don't have it. We need every extra space.
And we will show that plan before the board memorializes the revolution.
It could be done.
And we will show that plan before the board memorializes the revolution.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I would ask for a motion.
Make a motion, the application be approved.
Okay, okay. The Frankel motions, and Mr. Sibley second. Based on everything that they accepted. That's sidewalks before CO, and showing the parking spaces, that you're not losing anything. And the car corral. Okay, that's all part of the motion. Okay, you have it now?
Parts in the beginning, also, one at the beginning, going dollars on it over there? And one, at least one in the back? That's only two places.
Before that, we'll give a resolution compliance, show the plan, make sure it works. And Terry, you have to...
And Terry, I think it should be on like on two opposite sides of the shopping center. They have two car corrals, and that's why, that's behind. I want you to mark it then. I don't want to mark it then. Okay, Al, you ready for everything? Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bydko.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, number five. You go? Oh, you can go ahead, I'm glad. But we'll just wait a minute. I'll take that, please? I was taking a few minutes recessed, then he went to the restroom. You have to write also? You have to.
Good.
Yeah, she's like this. Do you know what happens? When you check somebody, once you listen, a nurse to your house, and they check your medicine, and she... So, she came, she checked all the medicine, she checked everything, the doctor, and all this. Oh, she's like, I gotta take a blood test. Took a blood test, she put the blood cap thing on. She's cold and heavy. How do you feel? I said, cold. She's cold and heavy right now. I said, she should have a medic. She says, your heart rate is 170. I said, is that me? She says, it should be 60. I said, no. She says, what do you mean?
She says, it should be 60. She was talking about your lower ring rate 170. Wow. You are no way up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I said, well, what do you have? She said, you have 170. I said, well, I'm going to drag myself to that.
I forget which is which. One 20 is 90, 90 is 16. The lower ring is supposed to be 60. It could be a little higher. She's telling you it was 170.
Writing notes over there, I don't remember.
No, it's not, 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 that's a blood pressure. Blood pressure. Pulse count, 170. So, I dragged myself to that, but I don't know. And I did, I told him why I was there.
But you found mine all by?
Yeah.
But John gets credit for a lot of that, and pushes that. I know. I'm really serious. But they feel it'll take time to... But once it gets to...
It's going to be easier.
We're happy about it. We're happy about it. This last year, we became a pair. It's not going to get this big. We're happy.
Who's talking about that?
Let us know. We get it. We don't care.
But no one's with us on it.
Where was the shared parking house? I mean, it worked on the subject, you tell me.
There was communication of that and forth, and we, Scott, Scott, we had the 10 time due counts. It's okay. And you know what? You write with the...
The cards are going to be... If you want somebody to object in a...
Oh, yeah?
But let's assume somebody did. You're not telling...
Your students said that, or you write that.
The whole, the entire letters...
Does, yeah?
What, nobody tells?
Yeah. It's fine. No, I don't think so. I'm not paying you or...
You have to give you more, you know, like I said, okay? What do you do? Don't be worried. Hold on, Josh, ready? Go ahead. I've got to go to both sides.
The next part, you've got to...
Guys, you have two more. You ready?
Okay, Chairman. I got it. Right. You're ready, right? You can say that there. Okay.
I think we're starting early, then.
I figured, well, I get it. Actually, I was following, I needed to get out of here.
It's Wednesday night, okay? Come back after we get...
Yeah, you know what happened about that new bonding wall? I told you, I knew that was going to screw up the week, I can tell.
When we choose, you know, when we actually, we're actually, we're like, we thought it's the only place. So, we don't have to...
Yes, right.
But we don't care, because the fish is... It's not a problem.
Yes.
I'll call the meeting back to order. Please be seated and be quiet. Let's continue. We have two more things to go for now. That's mine, a 10 lot, right? Uh-huh, 10 lots?
Yes, the debt payment provider, the debt payment for more, more than 40 lots. So this class probably...
Terry. Okay, Terry, please don't know, Terry, don't go through that. I think that shoe is full already.
But seriously, when I was outside, I could all get saved, but it's not really just the only shoe.
Okay. The deal was in when it comes. Okay, Terry, go through it, please.
Looking at our report on the zoning, comment number two, we indicate, and the running testimony on this, the right wing dedication could be, could be triggering the barriers for lot area. Here, so the other end is the case. If we are correct and obviously the board can have that upon it. You see, there are lot with variances for several of the lots. Possibly rather than necessarily for the actual recovery as well. We have something saying under battery treatment, under designing waivers. Similar people can carry their applications. The option for proposing a very wide construction, a very wide construction along 4th Street. A central wide construction on Main Street. Lock that capacity on the end of that. And we're not sure, but it appears that we may be secretly on current concept for three trees along Main Street and 4th Street. I believe that's everything under the... Anybody to give some testimony, Brian? As to whether you are seeing all these others, is that correct?
According to your chart, you know, you don't have to ask if any of them is, right? Okay, Mr. White.
Um, we're going to be very watching on the app of the applicant. He has been going over this LLC under the card. How can this 2D minor subdivision, or sub like 7 existing lots, give a total of 10 lots? By way of background, this odd shaped tract currently consists of six zero lot line lots fronting on East Fifth Street, among which three duplex buildings are already standing and are in construction. These units are in the R75 zone. The variance that being sought for is allowing 50 feet or 60 feet is required is for these six lots and is therefore in existing condition. The site then contains one additional lot, Lot 19, that has frontage on East Fourth Street and on Main Streets. This lot is currently the site of grocery stores. That store will be demolished and in its place, four new zero lot line, four new zero lot line lots are being created, among which two new duplex buildings will be constructed. A relative running letter points out that some of the lots are odd shaped. This was done in order for the lots to be conforming. However, the court prefers for us to straighten out the lot lines and to grant the appropriate lot area variances, the applicant surely has no objection to doing so. These lots were strictly designed for these odd lot shapes in order to make sure that they will be conforming.
You know, if we make them square, you're coming back for another house on those lots. Leave it unchecked.
The board likes your regular one.
But when we come to the jack of lot lines, usually we get, "Why did you give us these strange jack of lot lines?" So we're explaining this, but obviously this is further to the board. Brian, you sworn right, Chris?
No.
It wasn't.
I don't think so.
You firm tell truth, false truth, not truth to the board?
My name is Brian Flanner Jackson, insurance licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I have two exhibits. A1 is Street 52 of the tax map. And it shows in orange the properties located between 4th Street and East Fifth Street and also fronting on Main Street. A2 is the minor property that's submitted. And I highlighted in orange the lots. And I agree with Terry, they're odd, but they're small performing area. We have, all of them have 10,000 plus square feet. This is an application where there were, and there are three duplexes under construction, which are on 50 foot wide performing duplex lots that are under construction on East Fifth Street. We're taking a little bit of property off the back of that, the any of these lots that are on East Fifth and Main Street. We're very indicated the grocery store is, and the one that always acts on traffic down on East Fourth. And the block today is structured.
Which store is this? Oh, no.
Did you hear John?
It's an old store.
It's an old store.
So now we have one duplex fronting on East Fourth and one on Main Street. If we locate every street fourth in respect to the variance that is requested, he indicates first of all, if there's a right way dedication, take some of the way we're proposing, right way easements similar to what everyone else has done. So that we don't take the area away, and I think it's consistent with all the other approvals. I think it's appropriate and I think it serves the same purpose. He also indicates the board, they want to change some of the lot lines, but as the chairman said, these are interesting and we'll leave this way so we know we got.
So we don't get more? So we know we don't get more?
Right. And maybe the board feels more is a better... I love having the ambiguity, so I would take more with me better. And this particular piece of property, six of the units are already being constructed. So that, you know, they're, it's set in stone right now. The foundations are in, the walls are up. I agree the report references a lot with. And the fact that we're, we arranged these to make new lots. New lots need 60 feet, existing lots need only 50 feet. They were approved, the building permits were issued and the houses on them at 50 feet. So it would be my testimony, we really don't need that variance. Certainly give testimony for variances in a fund in proportion so that, you know, the board will hear that even if my opinion is wrong, which occasionally is, at the moment, there's a lot here. Not so much now. And we have justification to grant the variance. Number four talks about maxer building coverage and B2 zone is a funny zone because the B2 zone lists some permitting uses that also says it prevents everything from B1 and the RM. And the RM allows duplexes at 35%. In this area, we're certainly requesting the 35% to the duplexes that are typical for the families that want to move into this area. That has to shul too lots away that they get to grant. And it will give testimony for, that the board will determine that we need a variance and we certainly need the criteria for the variance. The justification for the variance to leave, the board determined to need it. We start with the master plan that gives the background information on page two. On page three, it says that 2016, there were 4,464 of us and 216, 17, and 18 is a figure number. And basically it says that downstairs should provide for the growing population. Division statement on page seven says, "Accurately developing and redeveloping based on smart growth planning principles and providing housing opportunities here in residential neighborhood and redeveloping what's there is certainly a benefit to the town." This is the one in the 42 and 55, B2. Under the purpose, the access encouraged in this flagging, we've got to get appropriate use of development of all areas in the state. No matter which, with multiple health safety, we're going to help there. And it's my testimony, this does promote the public health and dental welfare of this area. E, promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and we're conforming libraries, conforming the density as stipulated in the master plan and zoning ordinance. And provides sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of examples. And this provides housing opportunities consistent with what the smart growth plan that holds down family from center. If the board determined we need a variance to leave, we'll be a C2 variance. We need to show the link to this specific property and I think the developer of this particular area did a very good job in putting together property and buying for the housing opportunities and redeveloping some of the properties that were in the diary or development. We need to show that the purpose of municipal land is more of a advanced. And those were what I just read to you. We need to show the variance can be granted without the substantial detriment of the public goods. And it's my opinion, my testimony, that this enhances the public good and enhances the surrounding property to carry, carry the utility value of the area. We need to show that the variance will not interfere in the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And my testimony that this is a virtually conforming application. And then we have to show the benefits that way of deferments. And my testimony is that only benefits, no deferments. So that's certainly accomplished. Looking at the rest of Henry's report.
The next thing you don't agree with.
And I agree with you.
The sidewalks on all of them?
Yes, yes.
And how much parking space do you have for each?
We have four for each.
For each unit?
And when it comes to the building from that time, for the, obviously, the six units that are under construction, they've already got them permitted with the four parking spaces. We ended up the other ones, they had more bedrooms, that would provide more parking.
The sidewalks will be before the COs?
Yes.
Do you agree with the rest of the report?
Yes.
Brian, do you agree with everything in the report?
Most satisfied with the answer.
Okay. Any questions from any board members? Okay, we'll open to the public. Anybody in the public like to be heard? Please come forward.
You firm tell truth, false truth, not truth?
Name to face this man?
A question. And remember, this is a requirement that you have to see an architectural once it's above four or five units? Am I having this amazing?
There is a checklist requirement for architectural plans for major subdivisions. This is a minor.
This is considered a minor why?
Because it's less than a net change in four lots.
Okay.
And they're not creating any new ways.
Got it. Okay, so we have two questions. First of all is, what's the story with the decks? It's more architectural, so I don't see where the decks are going in.
They're going to be setback.
You have to be a...
The decks will comply. The unit will comply and the decks will comply.
Is it going to be decks or not?
Yes, there's gonna be decks.
There's going to be decks. Do you have space to put the decks?
Yes.
So there's going to be decks and it's not going to happen like this, happening all over Lakewood. Then the unit will still do setback and then they're coming to the zoning board. They need a deck variance because...
So Brian, can you build a deck without asking, seeking any new variances?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Now, the other question that I have, this is coming up in the entire panel up, is about apartments. I'm talking about this. First of all, you say you'll be making a basement, closed basement. Is that a finished basement or unfinished basement? It makes a big difference because if you have bedrooms or basements and it's finished, then you may have to calculate the apartment.
Now, may I make this submission? That's what I indicated. If there's more bedrooms than are required, then the apartment will be required. We'll comply with the ordinance. We're not asking for any relief. The ordinance says that if you have a basement, whether it's finished or not, you count it as two bedrooms. If you put more bedrooms down than that, then you have to count it as that. But unfinished basement counts as two bedrooms.
How do we get the calculation?
Brian, if I could, Jeremy, you're talking about submission at plot review. At which time you will have architecture.
That is correct.
How do we get to the calculation of four? Two for the basement, two for upstairs?
The calculation of four comes for, from the ordinance. The ordinance says for eight bedrooms, you need four parking spaces. We're saying that we're probably gonna have six bedrooms upstairs.
And two rooms.
To the basement, it's eight, we have four parking spaces. And the four, it's a long history. If you had time, I would go through the whole history of how to...
You have, do you have, you have sufficient space on the side? But if you need a fifth, or that you can add it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So now my last question is, how many, you post these other duplexes? The standard is Lakewood, make them into two apartments. Even though there's only, it says one, they'll make it into two. That's what's happening. Because they're going to be two separate entrances to the basement from outside. Suss.
I think in all probability, it'll be the same as any other one that does have two separate entrances, one for the family use and one for the rent. The ordinance says and the applicant is agreeing to, he'll follow the law. There's only one basement apartment permitted. This is a minor subdivision.
One rental?
One rental, right.
For private use, you can still have?
Yes, yes.
Now, my question is, are you putting in some brickless? I know this is a hot topic, but I'm not just asking.
It's a minor subdivision. We're not asking for any construction maintenance. We're asking to take the property and divide it up into virtually conforming lots.
But if you just said that you're going to rent out the basement?
I didn't say I was gonna rent out the basement. I said that if the basement is rented out, it would be a maximum of one basement apartment.
A little twist, the seven basement will be rented, but it's okay. I'm just mentioning is that if you notice that...
I know the building code, when they come with a plan, they have to provide a plan and they have to meet the building code. The applicant is representing that he's gonna meet the code. He's a good guy. I heard you come through the way.
Let me just explain to you. If God forbid something happens, if people did something that were not supposed to, and you stood up over here and you knew about it and you were complicit about it, they might come after you. I'd like to, Brian. I don't want you to have the trouble.
I appreciate that, but not complicit.
Okay, so the only other concern that I have is, is the attic. Is there going to be an attic? And is there going to be steps for the attic?
Yes, it's only a minor subdivision for the... It's not a sidewalk.
I was just asking.
Most likely to be like all the other divestments, as you pointed out. We typically have the approval to be finished as an attic. The developer typically needs to finish that and it's not worth it.
Yeah, but don't...
The thing is that you cannot write down the basement.
No exterior, there will be no exterior steps to the attic.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you have more bedrooms, you will probably say, you will give the parking what you need.
So you just said, no exterior steps?
That's what they stated. That's what they stated.
We can just have a standard question. Is the developer gonna follow the law? And if you could say yes, and that's it, then we can go to the... Am I right, though?
Yes. Which is where it will work out. The law, the law, it provides one apartment and basement.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else in the public like to be heard in this application? Sign no, we'll close it. I would ask for a motion, this application?
I'd move to approve the application.
Okay, just, the trans, our move, we have a second? Everyone want a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, seconds. Roll call.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Claywell?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you much. I don't get a hook? Okay, the last application.
This application has been 467.
Please, please be proud. We have one more to go.
85648, the L3 is like, I have a state, you know, in the warehouse, telling you, "Name three of the top areas you would take."
Anybody here for this application? It's you? It's the first time tonight. Okay, Terry, if you'd like to talk to your board?
Yes, sir, Chair. Beginning first, submission waivers. We have some of the listed, we want to order. First three, up of Concourse of Management, we just came to repeat again. We're commenting over the design information on these plants, locations, where I was, et cetera. We do not believe that there is an issue with any thing regarding this property. We don't have any of this speech here to best your knowledge. If you want to abandon any lower cements or if you have to modify, that's what we require our county board of health approval. We don't object to these fundamental standing. Similar to the location of test holes, test results system, we have no issue for cements system purposes to defer that to the health. Submission waivers for profiles is no longer required without submission. Submission waivers requesting for providing locations, names, and whens, that is a situation that we feel is the again, we think are sufficient for our purposes and we recommend we agree. Finally, under E I S, we support leaving based on my previous development and tree protection management waiver is adhered per se gunny. If the board grants approval, they will have to be filed in the... These are...
We have a motion to go along with the recommendation, can you hear me? Some of moved, wait a second. Does it say the second all in favor? Okay, after zoning?
Design waivers, design waivers from, in, in, for Avenue, I'm sure there will be a testimony on that, as well as a waiver from providing a sidewalk along James Street Village. The provided is...
There's no zones? There's no variances? You went to design waivers, left that zone? Just what I said before?
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Second verse, we're all starting to see it.
It was a long day today.
I can understand who, Terry.
Yeah.
And I even mentioned the Super Bowl, I didn't even say it. That's all I'm going to say, I'm tired. Don't get back to that, I'm positive, Chair. At the therapy meeting, the applicant indicated a regular vacation request pending for Wakefield Avenue for his testament. Lot area variance, culture required, lot width variance is requested. We know that if they have a vacation, that they will have to come from the property, but as the application stands now, we have to require variances.
Terry?
Yes?
On the vacation, I know you heard us in the mayor yourself, the mayor said that any vacation, he wants to bring it to the board before they vacate, so I don't know how we can act on it.
I, I, I inferred the board, he's not comfortable again.
Okay, so, but there's no, as of now, I know he's not, they're not vacating, okay, continue.
We talked about these lot width variances, when Fredrick set back, there is requested. Again, we have comments about the vacation, of Wakefield Avenue, what you have to add to that. And that's the building coverage, put a three point six for thirty percent. So, you want to see more of the variance to the area?
That's correct.
Revisiting design waivers. Design waivers approved, from Wakefield Avenue, sidewalk for Oakley Street, sign waivers from Three Trees for changes. We know that there are street trees now on the plans, on James Street Village, will have a second meeting, and we're fundamentally... So, in the eight hundreds, actually, it was about three and a half.
This is one, yeah, the whole list of variances on this one?
What?
The whole list of variances, no?
Yeah. Um, this is, this is a vacation, I'm very watching on the act of the act of six forty minutes L S. Act of the scene, the primary final leaning side of the house, constructed forty-four thousand two hundred figures, warehouse with associated offices on the subject property. There are variances associated with that, but I don't have a professional for the standard on the model, and here we have just a five year contract. For all the women for commercial radials, this is a commercial radial that replaces some graduated commercials that are currently on the property, which was originally designed by the firm, and here we have a hearing. We're actually going to try to follow line, student of them as engineering consultants and ask them to use more.
Do you affirm tell truth, vote truth, not vote truth?
Yes, Steve, will you ever at this board? You have testified?
I should probably reconsider.
I don't remember you. So, I asked the firm for you. You could do it.
If you can, please say your credentials, if you say your degrees are stolen.
I'm a graduate of Northeastern University of Austin, Massachusetts. I'm not a graduate of Stanford. I have been a licensed professional in the state of New Jersey for over twenty-five years. I've testified in front of hundreds of boards in New Jersey, local boards, half township Jackson.
Is that part of you?
I believe so, but it's so far back.
You've been accepted by all boards?
I've been accepted by all those boards, all township, that too. Just a commercial resident in the property.
Okay, one second. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, if you could describe this application for the board members, particularly, obviously, we want to point out, let's identify our activities.
This is, I'll wait until this is A one.
Please.
This is an aerial view of the proposed property. We have James Street running bottom left, the top right, the center of the photograph. Our property is right from the center area, it's a really big street, it's very large, a very upper area. On the top side of James Street, we have some water slot, there's no water on the west side of James Street. You can see if you're heading east towards Jackson, you're a large, it's a great opportunity to, so our property, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty foot wide by five hundred fifty block. We're looking to propose a single warehouse building on. This is a color rendering on our site, and I'll do this later.
What zone is it?
This is the M one zone, so it's a, we're going to use industrial zone.
Is this where the mechanic shop is?
What's that?
The mechanic shop?
This is a mechanic auto shop.
Mathis Auto Sales or Mathis Auto something?
No, that's next one.
Let's next one, okay, okay.
We're, uh, close on.
Got it, got it, okay.
You look, uh, this, this is right here.
Right.
There's, there's a couple lots there.
Okay. Sorry, Phil.
So essentially, we have submitted to the county, we've got additional approval from the county, they have approved our graduating hour approvals. We're looking to do a very full lift, which is a three per half, so we are negotiating additional five feet to go, so we'll provide a full twenty-six foot wide structure and driveway that we serve stairs and compartments to come through the site. We have our approximately forty-two thousand square foot building with our driveway up the left side adjacent to the paper right, our proposed loading with some parking in the rear and apartment access side. We're not conforming, uh, for, and our act for various is associated with setbacks that are related to the paper street and way through it. Currently, the existing building is approximately twenty-six feet from the proximity to which we're proposing to maintain and save a setback for our proposed building. The existing building currently has a front yard setback variance to James of about thirty five feet. We're proposing to pull the building back and it will be moving and roaming for the front yard variance, James Street. Additionally, rear and side variances to the south and west will also be conforming. Parking and roaming are conforming with the ordinance. We have flooring coverage previously claimed forty-three point six percent versus forty percent permitted in the zone. I think state towards the variances, I think the variances clearly be granted under the C R C D. Variance, it has the uniqueness of the existing property, it's very narrow and deep lot. There are the work, you know, configuring an appropriate building that would be marketable to the tenants that would be looking for this, and then the support which is, we believe that sidebar setback variance and public occurrences would not be definite to the public and is a certainly advanced proposal and that's the plan is to provide, you know, usually the market and product.
How many parking spaces are you proposing?
I'm proposing thirty-three, I believe, parking spaces where...
What's required?
Where are required.
How many offices are going to be there?
There is about thirty-four square feet of office and it will be located in the front of the building. So parking requirement, typical warehouses has a parking requirement and then they have a ten executive parking requirement. That's typical if you're not providing an office space in the building. So as we are providing thirty-four hundred square feet of office, we believe that executive space is included in the office space. So you've capital need to be based on warehouse and thirty-four hundred square feet of office and we'll provide thirty square feet of office.
Thirty's required according to the...
Thirty's required, thirty's definitely.
Is this going to be one, one whole office warehouse or is this going to be like flex space?
Currently, it's anticipated to be four individual units within the...
Terry, are you okay that they only need thirty-five spaces? Sounds like a little for such a big building.
Did they get, Mr. Chairman, there is a similar building on Airport Road that they were building and I don't, I think that you were against parking variance for that, it was similar to...
I know, but their testimony, they don't need any more than thirty.
Testimony requires thirty-one, forty-one spaces.
Thirty requires.
But I would not be there.
Yes, the...
Be, 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 be required.
It's a big building, a lot of...
It's going to be, the thirty-four hundred square feet will be broken into four individual units. We anticipate probably about four, four individuals in the warehouse space, ten in that area and then office space is provided.
Are, are, Antoine, you're referencing the one that was, the smaller storage units, correct?
Yes.
I, I would imagine you're referencing, I think I heard, because I think about four tenants or four spaces?
Four tenants, yeah.
Um, at, at least it is not as many as we were looking at in the last one.
What's?
Store is large warehouse.
Can you show me the, the flow of traffic? Where would the big trucks come in?
The big trucks will come in off James, they'll, they'll turn in, come down the driveway on the side of the building and come in and basically they'll load on the rear of the building.
That's your loading docks?
These are our loading docks and we have some parking up against the south side of the building for the warehouse occupancy and then we have for the office occupancy parking.
And a big trailer can make it out, a tractor trailer?
Well, we have it specified to a certain size, not going to get a full fifty feet of box here. We've, we've signed it for a minimum of the maximum allowed truck size.
What do you do with bigger truck numbers?
Well, we have signage, we're providing signage that says, you know, large truck trailers are not permitted. Certainly, you know, under any circumstance, you can't prevent someone just somehow going in there.
I know, so what do you do? Do you make the turn?
They have to back out.
A trailer backing out?
No, just, I mean, no different than I have their serial location, we're saying it's not a long area.
Can we do it around, going from the right side of the building, coming around, truck out, right in and all the way around, circular motion?
They just come all the way around the building?
Just the opposite way, yeah.
Well, one of the, one of the things that has come up recently with the neighbor is the possibility of mirroring the driveway to this side of the building and having access that may potentially work better in the future. We could provide a full circular motion because we are currently in a cemetary, we don't have sewer, the closest sewer is unachievable by gravity, so we're proposing a cement system on the side of the building. Unfortunately, due to that, cement system would be able to fade over that, otherwise we certainly couldn't provide a full circular access.
John, are you okay with it, with the way the trucks come in?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Well, they got the sign up there that...
That no big trucks are allowed, that's all right?
On the street, probably not. Do you have a last treat?
Even I get trucks.
But what about, what about using part of Wakefield Avenue for additional, for additional truck traffic? Instead of vacating the whole thing, why not just use that for... What's, what's the reason for the vacation away? I understand that Wakefield Avenue, if that, it goes from James Street to the, to the train track, so I, that, that part I get, so, right, so it's not going to be a through street?
There's no potential to go.
Correct, so it's not going to be a through street, but what about utilizing it for additional traffic flow for large trucks and stuff? In other words, because you're going to have trucks, you're going to get large trucks, that, that we all agree on, and basically they're going to stage and, and just hang out on James Street until somebody loads everything.
You know, there's, there's an economy of scale here, so we're, we're going to be improving a paper street that we would only be improving for ourselves where we would certainly provide access, but we're providing the identical access to the property on our property.
Don't, don't...
If we, if we did any improvement to make, then all we would be doing is shifting that driveway over, doesn't...
No, you would allow a spot for the trucks to stay instead of hanging out on James Street. In other words...
If a twenty-foot, if a truck comes in, and it's hurt, they, they're going to have to back back out anyway.
And then James Street's going to be stopped, no, no traffic?
Yeah, no, in other words, I, I'm familiar with the area.
Yeah, if a, if, if a tractor trailer comes in, it's not designed for them, it's, it's like the load with an upgrade. It says five tons maximum, however, for local deliveries, large trucks drive over when they, when they have to. If a large truck gets in here, instead of him being able to make a uniform, unkay turn to maneuver again now, he's going to have to maneuver himself to get himself back down. So, the general operation of the facility is intended to be for the smaller tractor trailer type truck. If larger trucks get in, it's more of a pain.
Right, but if, but if a portion of Wakefield Avenue is improved, the, the truck can make a K turn on Wakefield Avenue to come back out, come back out onto James Street as opposed to...
But for that very rare instance, to improve Wakefield Avenue, some are...
Okay, we'll see.
I'm not saying the whole, I'm, I'm not talking about approving the whole thing, what I'm talking about is just creating an adequate space so parks don't have to stay on James Street and not go, and not go anywhere.
If we just improved the little area, we're going to...
Something so trucks could at least, could at least, in other words, someplace for trucks, if they're coming into the building, so they don't have to hang out on James Street till somebody tells them what to do because there's going to, but, but, one, one second, it's, it's a, it's a public, it's a public right of way, it's a public right of way. So, what, what I'm saying is, if a truck's trying to get into the site and there's going to be a sign, no large trucks allowed, they're going to hang out on James Street. There's, that, it's a, it's a highly trafficked intersection.
James Street's a single lane over there.
Right, it's a highly trafficked intersection, so as opposed to hanging out on James Street, there, there could be some sort of space that you create on the existing right of way that's Wakefield Avenue. I'm not saying approve the whole thing, but, but somewhere where the trucks could at least stage themselves and then turn around when they have to come back out, they don't have to back out onto James Street.
Well, we have, we're providing a twenty-four foot driveway.
One foot for driveway.
He went to, you, you can't, you have to be sworn.
Can I speak?
One second, one second. One second. Andrew, you had a question?
Um, yes, so the employees would be parking in the back and then I guess walking through the warehouse or how are they?
This part, the transportation, please, employees of the warehouse are in the parking back. The employees of the office, especially if you show the parking door.
Yes, so the parking is run for the office space up front and that there are stairwells and access for the rear for the warehouse.
Okay, so visitors, visiting the storefronts would be also parking in the front?
In the front, but separate from the truck track. And, you heard her comment, we have a twenty-four foot aisle.
The storefronts?
No, no, no.
There's no, there's no visitors coming out of the front?
Well, she's a person for the smaller, maybe they're...
Okay, employees.
We have a twenty-four foot aisle. If tractor trailer does come in and parks against the side of the building, there's still a fifteen foot aisle for vehicles to come in. The truck wouldn't come in and block the driveway, it's not like an eighteen foot one-way drive. So if a tractor trailer comes in and they park against the side of this building temporarily, there's still, this isn't a heavily trafficked area, so there are going to be opposing traffic patterns.
That, I, I, I live right down the street, it's a heavily trafficked area.
No, I'm saying on side, I'm not saying James Street...
No, but I'm saying James and, and, and Cross Street, that intersection is heavily trafficked.
And you can not back out?
So, all I'm saying is that you have an existing right of way to, to do something with it and, I mean, you said before that if a truck, larger than fifty-three feet, fifty, if a fifty-three, I'm not familiar with size trucks, but if a fifty-three foot truck wants to drive in, which I'm assuming that's the type of truck that can make a delivery there, you're going to have a sign that says you can't get in, you can't drive in, so what's the truck going to do? It's going to stay on James Street.
So you could, could this little large tractor tell and maneuver which one is that?
For the, for the occasions that that occurs, the truck will come into this thing For the, for the occasions that that occurs, the truck will come into this site and he will have the more difficult maneuver to get out-
Yeah.
That would traditionally be accepted, so what will happen is, as these tenants start occupying their spaces and they get their deliveries, just like FedEx, FedEx doesn't drive a large tractor trailer in the city, they drop and get the small boxes and they take the small boxes because they won't move. So what will happen is these tenants start operating, will start to realize what they should or should not be bringing in and out of this site. There may be a couple of instances initially and the site can handle them, it's just not a desirable situation.
Saying, twenty-four feet is a narrow driveway and a big truck and people pulling in and out, they have nowhere to go. That's all, I, that's my opinion on, on James Street, so, yeah, you have an existing municipal right of way, I, I think, I think we could do something with that. And I'm, again, I'm not saying improve the whole thing.
Twenty-four feet turn?
I, I think the other concern is it's a public right. So if we're, if we're encouraging an integral use of this site in a public right of way, you're, there's a, there's a big question mark that may happen.
Well, well, who's that right of way gonna be vacated?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm missing.
Who's that gonna be vacated?
If it's going to you.
Well, they made a request for it to be vacated, if it's vacated, it would go, yeah.
So if it goes to you, so why should you?
Absolutely, if the right of way were vacant, then, then we can make improvements and adjustments. We're just looking to move forward on the assumption that vacation doesn't occur because that's the worst case.
Well, then maybe we should let folks vacate it.
Yeah.
And see what happens, I just, I just don't like this idea of twenty-four foot, again, I, I just don't like this idea of twenty-four foot entry on James Street.
You mentioned something about, you tried to mention something about the order vacation recommendation for road vacation, this is a problem to be a classic example, because this road doesn't need anybody.
I, I personally, all for vacating this so you can make, make improvements that you need to make.
Every single business here in town gets deliveries from big trucks and small trucks. You have the area, we've, gotta try to accommodate it.
If, if, if this-
I personally think this is a very nice project, I think it's gonna be something that's very nice for the area, it's gonna fit right in. I just don't like this twenty-four foot wide driveway with big trucks going in.
Who's, who's the next property, cause if it gets vacated, it gets split, the king bolt?
Twenty-four twenty-four.
Right.
Yeah, so this, this property is developed, it's, this is all sloped here, if you're familiar, that, that driveway for our neighbor was down through the back of the building.
Elevation's, but-
So the vacation that goes to them is unusable property. My coincidence is usable approach to that right of way is on the side.
Yeah, the upside dropped down.
See, we could, if that's vacant, we can widen the driveway.
We can widen the driveway, the nature of our application from you right now only changes by, by maneuverability of tractor trailer.
Well, you see, the, the statement that only a certain sized truck fits it, and that's what scares me.
Well, it's not, I just want to say on the other side, if, if the intent of the tractor, the intent of design is for the, the high probability of-
I know, I have a head of city in town, so I know where the trucks come. Uh, if it, if it does get vacated, would you, would the tractor trailer have enough room to swing around the back?
Yeah, it would provide more, instead of being a difficult maneuver, we're just doing average.
And then it could swing around and come around the building?
Yeah, well, around the building is still out of the question until the sewer issue. We still can't do the full circumference because we need to provide a septic system and drainage space, and we can't pave over that until we come up with alternatives.
John, what do you feel about the? I think we have to think about that the big trucks are gonna be coming there. What do you think?
Well, once you got the sign up in the front, when you make orders, you, you let them know, it's, I've, I've worked on this-
If a big truck comes-
Where they, they get the big sign up, you can't get the big truck in.
I know, if they stop on James Street, there's no traffic on that.
Yeah, it, it, that ties it up, right.
Yeah, and then it's not too far till you get the tractor in.
No, they'll, they'll come into the site, again, it's not, it's not that they're gonna, they're gonna come and they're gonna stop, but they're pulling and they're gonna take care of their business and he's gonna be stopped spending five extra minutes getting his truck out of the site then just making the giant move.
I, I would feel, me personally, that if the township does vacate it promptly, to make it wider, that the truck could get it, turn, turn around.
We absolutely agree.
Where, where are you with the vacation? I mean, I, what, what, when will you know?
They, they haven't got-
And you, you have to be affirmed if you want-
When, when was it required?
It could be affirmed, you could, okay.
I, I, I feel like I recall getting a request, usually I'm the one who reviews them for, for planning the side of the township. Uh, as soon as you started talking about Wakefield, I, I recall over here in this area, there's been other vacations similar to this one that run from James Street to the other that have been made. Um, I don't know why the committee didn't act on this one yet.
We didn't have the act of firms, because I think the, I think you can answer some of the questions.
Okay. Please take your name and then get fully ready.
You're the president.
Okay, and then raise your hand, you have to be affirmed.
Affirmed, tell it to the board, not those fifty before the order.
Yes.
All right.
I first spoke with the mayor and the mayor told me, even though there is a thing that they don't want vacated roads, there's, there's no reason why I have to vacate this road. Conscience I can do it, I should submit a letter and hope they hear it.
Did you submit that one?
We spoke about it and then, um, I don't remember if there's like-
That may be why.
I can't, I can't, I was, I was in that meeting and the mayor, I don't know if the letter was submitted, but there were plenty of applications here in town that have smaller drivers in the back of us and have trucks and are functionally addressable.
That's, that's-
Conscience of that and the one that, um, I'm not sure her name, just mentioned, Angela just mentioned, has a smaller driver than this and all this basic doesn't, the smallest bases also have smaller drivers and they are being improved.
And one, one thing I do see as a lot of businesses, it should be, Cliffton Avenue, nine Compton Road, the trucks can't make it in, they just stop in the middle of the road and block all the traffic.
They're definitely not gonna stop on James Street.
If they have no choice-
They have no choice, they must stop by James Street.
They're not gonna stop there.
One at a time, one at a time.
They're not gonna pull to the driveway.
Driveways are not for- Okay, I think we should wait to see what happens with the vacation of the street before we do anything.
I agree.
And we'll help you out with the vacation, any letter you need from the planning board will help you out and we'll, uh, and we'll, and we'll encourage the town to create a vacation of the street. And if they don't vacate it, I think you should come back. We'll open up to the public.
One second, one second, hold up for a minute. John, what's your recommendation?
No, if you, if you could get the street vacated, it'd be perfect. If you could get the street vacated-
Then the trucks could get in, no problem.
But you still have that twenty-four foot wide road, like you say, they could jockey that truck around and get it back out, as long as they didn't have it full of cars back there.
No, he's saying what he's saying, what you said. They should be able to move inside out. We don't think there's been a lot of traffic.
There's no issue, and I fully appreciate your concern with the model back in James Street and the safety issue, and if the rest of taking my life into my own hands and driving sidewalks, I think, I think in the industrial zone and especially on this side of the road, the sidewalks probably are not a good idea. I don't think you wanna introduce foot traffic along driveways and crossings with tractor trailers. You have a residential zone on the other side of the street, ladies and gentlemen, the other side of the street, certainly we'd say keep the foot traffic out of the north side of James Street.
Yeah, yeah, I'm also sure about that. John, what's, what's?
I'm sorry, chairman, um, if the town and the board has required applicants to submit requests for either no parking or no stopping or standing signs in the road, would that be?
We can do whatever we want, if there's a big truck, they said they can't, they can't get in.
Okay, familiar.
Can you put any aside if you want?
No left turns, only to this path, pardon?
No left turns in?
Yeah, only from the right, for trucks at least, across the street.
No, because they're gonna get traffic from Jackson or any kind of situation. I think a lot of the right turns, maneuvering near the site is not an issue.
It's not traffic on James.
Oh, but as far as the traffic, no, vacating the turn and coming in, there's no issue. There's ample room, there's ample room to get into the drive. Honestly, I don't, trucks are not gonna stop on James Street, they're gonna pull into the site, it's just, if you're a truck driver, you're not gonna stop on any-
You drive a truck?
What's that?
You drive a truck?
I had a CDL till I was twenty-eight, twenty-nine years old.
I see all truck is stopping wherever, that big, that's not an issue.
They stop wherever, but do you, you've got warehouses and trucks and-
I, I, you heard the chairman saying he's got trucks and there's all the time to a store, if the trucks can't fit, they just stop and then-
On, on Camper Road.
So we, we can't, there's nothing we can do.
All right, all right.
If you had ample room, they still-
You can stop.
Okay, we hear you, right, if you had a vacation, you'd have more.
Frank, if you can, then you really-
Okay.
One second. Now, regarding, adjutant ago, regarding sidewalks, Mr. Franklin, what's your opinion?
Yeah, I'd like to see the sidewalk, yeah.
I, I, I think we're doing it all over Lakewood.
They'll all connect someday.
And one day they're gonna come out.
Right.
And I think it's gonna be in the near future. I mean, uh, Mr. Flansmore, what's your opinion?
I, 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 I agree with John that in this area, curving sidewalk, I think, even though, even though the industrial part, we always say that we don't wanna see the sidewalk-
But James has a natural-
And I would agree with, um, Steve, and I would agree with Steve, that usually in industrial areas, you wanna discourage foot traffic, but in this area, it's really a mixed residential, industrial, commercial area, so.
Mr. Stable, what do you?
I think curving sidewalk, yeah.
Let me pull the ball, Mr. Stable, what do you?
Also, you mentioned that the, the office is gonna park in the front.
Yes.
It requires fourteen parking spots, then you're only like twelve, including the handicap.
Fourteen?
We have fifteen stalls, plus.
I, I couldn't count, I think I counted twelve.
So you're with this sidewalk?
Maybe so.
Fifteen? Yeah, so which sidewalk?
Yeah, sidewalk.
Fifteen, fourteen, or?
Fifteen, fifteen including two handicaps for the back, also the warehouse. Handicap off for the back also?
No, handicap for the, for the front, there's no accessibility in the rear, it's just a front.
No, no handicap parking in the back, no.
Okay, I, I was just pulling, Angela's want to, on the record, do you feel that there should be sidewalks, no sidewalks?
I think there should be sidewalks.
Okay, Mr. Meyer?
I feel like there should be sidewalks also.
Okay, so I think the, the, I mean, the football, I can ask everybody, everybody feels that should be sidewalks.
Yeah, no, I, you know, sometimes-
I, we're not giving variants on sidewalks and one day they're gonna tire and there's residential all over the place.
I think we should wait in general to see what happens with vacation of the road.
If it keeps, we, we, we'll provide this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna open, well, I'll open the public. Wait, wait. You want, you want to explain?
Give me card.
Okay, now, I'll, I'll open the public for a second. Okay, Angela, please take your name off the record.
You have to be affirmed.
Affirmed.
Affirmed, you're affirmed, tell it to the board.
Affirmed, I want to make a good suggestion, you know, sometimes-
Okay.
Say something else.
Okay.
They said that you need this park over here for the septic.
Right.
I have a great idea.
Okay, one second, one second. Steven? Mr. Engineer, he, he has a question and he has a suggestion.
Yeah, but a good suggestion. Might not like it because it's going to cost you money.
Okay, Mr. Klon, can you maybe move on, that's how it gets here?
It's going to help the old, the, the old traffic problem. You said you need this space over here for the septic. This is what you should do, take this greenery, put it on this side, have the vacated street that you wanna vacate, true traffic coming in over here, going out over here, septic is out, you'll have the greenery over here, you have a thirty, fifty foot right of way. You could get trucks in, trucks out, and everybody's happy. I know it's going to cost you money to develop the right of way, that's what you're applying this ground to prevent, and I understand, you're doing a job, but if you take this green park, put it on this side, you have this beautiful convenient trucks, double tractor trails. What do you say to that?
Uh, it's not my vote.
And, and really, and really, the improvement doesn't have to be full municipal road improvement, it could just be, it doesn't have to be a road spec, you know, it's a driveway, it's a, a driveway.
If it's vacated, then it's just a driveway.
I think it's a very good idea.
You don't have to vacate that road, that's what I'm saying. Don't vacate that.
You have to vacate for the trucks to go on.
You see?
Oh, to the very-
If you don't, this is where the issue is, I'm just trying to bring out a point.
But these, no, it's, 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 it's just for this part.
Everybody does it.
Or, or, or just vacated and make a driveway out of it, I know the problem.
And then it doesn't have to be a box thing.
Yeah.
Which would make a lot more sense.
If it's vacated?
And it's cheaper. Right. See, well, that means only one half of the street, but it's empty, it's just by the other half of the road is usable.
Right.
Why, why wouldn't they just develop this road, it makes more sense, I know it's going to cost more money, but it makes the most sense to develop-
Well, let me, let me go one second, if it further into that, we know this, this roadway it really serves no purpose, it doesn't serve any value, it's for the level of design. From, from the standpoint of improvements, we can just create a one-way clockwise circulation out of something. We don't have to put a twenty-four foot drive on on twenty-four foot driveways. Why add all that improvement stuff, we don't need to. We're not creating a roadway here that people are gonna use. We'll bring a one-way fifteen-foot drive on in to back our site, to come out with a one-way fifteen-foot drive out. The trucks aren't gonna move until they're into the vacated area, they don't need twenty, the twenty-four foot was a two-way pass. If we go with a one-way circulation around the site, we can go to a single-way travel. The trucks, we provide a vacay, the trucks come in.
A truck, a truck can make a turn on a fifteen-foot radio?
Well, no, we'll put, we'll put a larger vacay in for the truck to make the turn, but they'll vacuum into a one-way travel way, um, I don't know what the words of the professional skills are on that, but it serves the same purpose, it cuts down the amount of coverage of buildings, the improvements, why make all those improvements if the roadway is really ever going to be used?
That's all subject to the township vacating.
And if it gets vacated, then-
No, it's like, Steve, you're talking even if the road is not vacated?
If the road isn't vacated, then all we've done is we've improved one travel in the road. If, if for some reason in the future the roadway needs to be improved, well, whoever needs it improved will continue the improvements and make it a full road.
And you would. Just one thing, Chairman, if I could.
Yeah, sure.
I'm okay with what I'm hearing, once a couple of people. I mean, certainly, that shows that geometry works, so. Um, fifteen feet, I have to check internally, would it be a deal breaker if you had to go eighteen foot for a one-way off?
I, I don't, I don't necessarily think so, that we get eighteen foot one-way off, it's a little bit difficult maybe.
Can I just say another thought that I have?
I, I.
One second, let, let Terry finish. Let's hear it, Terry.
I think I can accept the loop if we have to go eighteen foot.
Okay, okay. Eighteen foot, you feel comfortable that a truck can make the turn?
With the proper circulation.
So I mean, just, we have that as the other option. I know we spoke about doing other improvements. I mean, I think, you know, from, from a, from a coverage standpoint, there's still a lot of that, it's still going. We're starting to add significant areas. Again, I think if, if the concern is still trucks coming off the street, we can bring, uh, the hammerhead improvement back here. For additional truck maneuvering up here, we can improve the full width proportion back here. So when the trucks come in, there's additional area up here.
Okay, so now, I'm never coming up with ideas, so I think, I think you should, you should draw a plan and come back.
Just back one more, one more point that I want to add.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make one more point for the vacated the right-of-ways. The concept was within, by the words, that the reason why roads should be vacated is because it heads to nowhere. There's one issue in Lakewood, and Mr. Stable brought it up, I mean, he was concerned about parking. And you have off-street parking, and he wanted, even though the zoning requirements for parking is very, very liberal in Lakewood, he's going to have, or whatever, whichever way you want to put it, depends on which eyes you're looking at. You want to encourage on-street parking. Now, the benefit of having a right-of-way is that you have a lot of on-street parking. That means this, if it gets overflowed and it's concerned by parking, you could use this right-of-way to use that as parking, and not only for this development, you could use it for the next development. You could use it for across the street. I'm just trying to bring out this, right-of-ways is not only important for the circle of traffic, it's important for the on-street parking. That's what I was screaming a lot about vacating streets, because you're taking away the on-street parking. A lot of the zoning, and I'm just going to jump out, a lot of the zoning that's.
Good question.
No, just.
But I, I, I think it's, I, that's actually a very good point.
A lot of zoning, a lot of zoning.
But.
I understand, but a lot of zoning that was done, that needed so much support with parking, was taking in account that it might be some on-street parking. So we want to encourage the on-street parking versus taking it away. I know it's going to cost more money, and I feel bad for them, but.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I, I think that we had some, some good concepts. I think, I think they should, they'll have to, you know, redraw a plan and come back with exactly what they're, what they're proposing.
Not necessarily the whole of the zone, the circle.
I don't know, we're talking about fifteen feet, part of the right-of-way, the whole right-of-way, then a hammerhead. So let them come back and come up with a plan.
If you're not calling it, you redesign the whole site.
No, not at all.
You want to see an alternate circulation plan.
I, I would like to see a circulation plan that fits trucks, could fit in, and then the least.
What about the idea of providing an area so that the trucks can move into the next?
I have no comment.
Well, the trucks can turn around easily, that's it.
And I think.
Assuming the largest truck.
You're not going to get a hammerhead down here, turn it back. Because you're going to drag your trail.
Mrs. Weinstein, I think that you should submit, you've been by the board, and you should submit to the township to see if they.
Yeah, but it's going to take a lot of time to get, to, to get.
Grabbing the board back.
That's the only issue. Agreed, we're going to do what the advocate wants.
The only, what's they say?
It's going to take you a month and a half before you get another public hearing, provide plans and do with your review letter anyway. So you're looking at March twentieth, if you have a month and a half.
And the township's meeting in ten days. You can get in on, on the next agenda, the township. Do what?
The board said before they'll help us, but we got a letter from the board.
Alec?
I confirm a letter, the board's in favor of the road vacation.
Yeah, if, if, if the road vacation can be used for improvements.
Right, if it's going to be utilized.
Six in the white.
Maybe, this, this is possible.
Okay, one second, one other time. Alec, I think the, the letter should request that we're in favor of vacating it, and to, to ensure that.
Yeah.
The road will be used for big trucks and for more parking.
I had one, I had.
What?
What's the point of vacating?
I don't hear what you're saying.
Kevin? So what's the point of vacating if you want to use it for?
No, that, that, that you should have room to have the trucks to go on, and for parking, what you said.
So then you're not vacating, just allowing?
Because that's not, because that's not the risk of accepting a substandard contract.
Okay, so what?
Chair, I have a question, I have a, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Meyer?
Um, space like this is very privy to service businesses. There are people that have, let's say, construction companies, or, uh, individual service businesses, like a plumbing company, electrician, electrician. Is there, would be there, would, would there be space to park their individual vehicles overnight, so on and so forth? Or the employees to park their vehicles when they come to the shop in the morning? Is that, is that something that?
Based on the parking that we'll provide in, is there space on the site to, you know, submit it over that parking?
Okay. That's it. Okay, so, Alec, what do you?
I would really ask Terry to watch the audience and hope the advocate can get a plan by the end of this morning, so Terry can sign with her.
Okay, are you okay with it, Terry?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll move to March twentieth.
Awesome.
Okay, we'll move on a second, roll call.
Give an answer.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stable?
Yes.
Mr. Stable?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Yes. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Give an answer.
Terry, to March twentieth, we're hoping no president is required, or, uh, ask for revised plans by the end of the month. Um, when you make that legal announcement, we'd like you to do that.
I mean, SP two-two-two-seven, Terry, uh, March twentieth, uh, same time and place, and no notice required.
Okay, uh.
I'll make every Sunday, uh, to make you grow.
I'll guess later tomorrow, like Terry before.
I'll be ready, and I'll meet everybody tomorrow.
Okay, you have any, any minutes? No? Approval bills?
There is one set.
Okay, approval of hundreds?
Yes, a booth.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of bills?
Aye.
Yeah. All right. Okay. You don't have a, a.
But the township, good job.
Do you have a, do you have a?
The last application.
Do you have a type writer?
Thank you.
Do you have a?
I have a typewriter.
Boy, I, you're metal one?
I am light. We have an official way of, of.
Hey, Alec?
You don't have a typewriter in your office?
No, that's what I was.
I'm not sure if it can.
I know, I don't know.
Is there a way to get the computer to type?
Unfortunately, I, I don't have any to try. It's just Francis. Like, it, because it's going to be testing, the grid seat lines up, putting things on with Francis, it lines up. I don't have any way to tell him.
I'll be right back.
I think we'll talk.
I don't think I can put these through the printer. I understand the concern, but. These are the cards, they're. Oh, these are my extras. These are the card, I can't put these through the printer, so there's no way to do the printer. These are extras for Francis.
You see all the details? That's normally what they do.
We're, we're, I, technically, I like your mom.
That's right.
I love, I love looking at all this stuff. Oh, okay.
My kids, we have a teenager.
Right.
I said that. I said, I'm going to get the picture.
Right.
Is she waiting for something?
I think so.
Yeah?
I think she's with the, with the, with the, with the.
I'm sorry.
I see my daughter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, hers.
Was she going to you? Oh, right.
Yeah.
I know, I thought it was someone else, wasn't it? He was my friend, but not tonight. So this is, this used to be his trip.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so my number goes to like, I'm the one.
Okay, good, well, I'm surprised you didn't all see the end.
Your vice chair?
I'll send it back to my dad.
Oh, oh.
That's how I came to the meeting, I know you all saw me sitting there.
I hear you were here for school or whatever.
Yeah.
Tell your father that.
Hello. But, good night, everybody.
Sure, you can, I, I have, yeah, well, unfortunately, the board hasn't had enough not cutting people off the money from speakers on the. But yeah, the chairman wants to.